Okay, we are now recording. Do you see a message that says that, Dan? Okay, all right, Jeff.
Good morning, everyone. We call our meeting to order. This is our study session for the month of January, our first meeting in 2022. Good to see everybody. Hope everybody had a good holiday. Let's begin, please, with a flag salute. Begin, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, just as for. We have four board members with us in person today, and Dan is remote with us. Welcome, Dan. We're glad that you can join us this morning. And we've got a lot of items on the agenda, so we'll get started. One that is very, very important. Well, let's start before we go there. Suggestions or comments from the audience would be next on the agenda. So just verify here that we didn't receive any. We're good there. Okay. And this will be the opportunity for anybody in the audience, remote or in person, to make comments to the board. So if there is anyone online with us today. Looking like it. No, no.
That's me and Dan. Yeah.
Okay, I guess we are good there. We'll move on then. For the audience that we do have, probably gets three minutes if they're interested in addressing the board at this point in our agenda. So we acknowledge that and accept that and listen to what anybody would bring to the boardroom. So we'll move on then to a very important and significant event here, and I'll turn it over to Superintendent Backland to swear in our newest board member.
Yeah, the November election brought us a new board member and incumbent coming back. So both Jamie Morford is an incumbent and you've all met now Joe Catrin. So for those of you at home and watching, we've got Joe Catrin, who is a longtime Seela resident and is joining our board. Officially starts today, actually, with his oath of office, but he has been doing some orientation and did a tour with me yesterday, went to the WASDA conference in November. He's ready to hit the ground running. We're happy to have him on the board. So Jamie and Joe, would you guys please stand? And I'm going to do this official oath of office, which we have some things you need to sign that we need to turn in with the auditor's office. Please raise your right hands. Repeat after me. I state your name. Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Washington. And will faithfully discharge the duties of Director of Seela School District. Number 119 Yakima County. State of Washington to the best of my ability. Congratulations, gentlemen. You are sworn in. Fair there. We'll make sure we get signatures on these from you prior to the end of the meeting. We'll get them into the auditor's office. It'll be official. If you want to take them and pass them down. Okay.
I would add my additional congratulations to Jamie for the reelection and to Joe for the election. And welcome. We're really excited to have you on the board and we're really happy that you're here.
Thank you very much.
Along with that, this is the time of year where annually we elect officers of the board, and so we'll move into that. Portion of it now. It's a normal order of business on an annual basis, and so we need to elect President, Vice President, and a WASDA Legislative Representative. WIAA, are we in between?
No, we're good.
We're good on that one. All right. So the way we do this is that we will open up nominations for each office separately and individually, and then we'll take a roll call on each one, each office, and then we'll move to the next one. So first office to begin with is President. So I will call for nominations for President to serve during this next calendar year.
I'll nominate Jeff Hartwick.
All right, thank you.
Slow down with all the nominations there, guys. Slow down with all the nominations. Right away.
The nominations. Right, just process check, Dan. You can hear us, okay?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, good. Thank you. All right, hearing no other nominations, then nominations are now closed and we'll do a roll call. So we'll start. Jamie, with you. So vote for, vote for Jeff.
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
And yes, for me. Okay, we'll move on to the next. Thank you, by the way. For your confidence in in me, and I'll do my best to represent the board as I have in the past. The second is Vice President. Nominations are now open for the position of Vice President. And I will nominate Jamie Morford for Vice President. The other nominations. Okay, we'll vote then with roll call. So we'll start at the other end. Joe, if you don't mind, whether you would vote for Jamie or not?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Jeff? Yes. And Jamie? Okay, congratulations. And then the last position is the WASDA Legislative Representative, which is an important role to represent Seela School District when it comes to legislative actions and activity going on in Olympia and representing us in that regard. So I would open the nominations then for WASDA Legislative Rep.
Is that Kellyanne? Heard of this?
It was Kellyanne's, yeah.
I'll nominate Joe Catrin.
We have a nomination for Joe for that. Any other nominations? Okay, just to check to be sure, Joe, would you accept the nomination?
Yes.
Okay, so let's vote, roll call. I'm voting for Joe for the Legislative Representative. Jamie, we'll start with you.
Yes.
Me is, yes. Sarah?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
And Joe?
Yes.
Okay, well, I think that takes care of our nomination, our elections for the 2022 calendar year. Congratulations to Jamie and thank you, Joe, for stepping up. We appreciate that a lot. And thank you, everyone, for your confidence in my position. Work hard together and have a great year. So that would conclude the election portion of our agenda, and we'll move on to the next. Which is the consent agenda. We have a couple of out-of-state travel requests, our student overnight field trip and out-of-state travel request. We've had a chance to look at both of those. Looks like one's to a football clinic. Coach Ditter and Ryan Steltz, and the other is an overnight field trip for Casey Benjamin and the DECA students to a leadership conference. Paperwork's been in our packet. We've had an opportunity to see those. Do we have any questions or discussion on any of those, either of those? I would entertain a motion then that we accept, that we adopt the two requests on the consent agenda.
I'll move that we adopt or accept both out-of-state requests on the consent agenda.
Thanks, Jamie. Any comments, discussion on either one of those? Any comments, Shane, on your end?
No, they're pretty straightforward.
The only question I had was the DECA. Looks like it's eight students and one chaperone. Is that a common?
That's a good ratio. Yeah. I mean, we try not to go above that number.
And it looks like ASP is paying for that one?
ASP Office, yes.
All right, DECA is a great program, and I fully support it, and I know that they do a good job in leadership.
Oh, DECA and CTE funds? Okay, CTE as well, CTE funds as well.
Okay, I think the application identified ASP as the main funding source.
And Chris knows all the budget codes by heart, so.
No, well, we're happy that you do. All right, we have a motion on the table for these two travel requests. Let's vote. All those in favor, please indicate with an "I."
I.
Oppose? Thank you, Dan. Sorry. Opposed? Okay, those are approved. So now we'll move into the meat of our meeting today, and that's our study session. For those in the audience, we have two meetings a month. One is a business meeting, which is a more common business activities. Then the second one is a study session of various topics that we select. Shane or Cabinet or the Board selects a topic, and then we do a little deeper dive on a particular subject. And so this is a study session. That one's the one that's held at 7:00 AM. The other business meeting is held at 4:30 PM in the afternoon. But this, this is a study session, and really it's a nice mix of bringing the board together to just revisit some of our board principles and some of our operating protocol that helps guide us in our, in our operations. So I'm going to let Shane lead us through this, and then we will have discussion throughout, and this is an opportunity for us to to adopt, tweak, change, introduce new whatever, and so more of an informal sort of discussion, and Shane will facilitate us through each of these topics. So Shane, turn it over to you.
All right, good. So you guys have a packet there that Tiara's prepared for you, and actually, the, I believe it's the fourth document in your packet. And Dan, can you see that on your screen there, what we have shared?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
Okay, great. So the first item, so we have, basically, we have five items that we are going to go through today. The Board Superintendent Operating Principles, which is something we like to revisit annually, and especially when we bring on a new board member. We're going to talk about student board representatives, which is something we've had for the last several years. It's actually sort of waned during COVID. So we want to use this opportunity to sort of reevaluate that. I think we all believe in the the purpose and the value of having student voice on the board, but just in what capacity? We want to talk a little bit about maybe some best practices there. We're going to look at our board calendar, which is kind of a living, breathing sort of a picture of all of our meetings and topics. We want to see how that format works for you. We're going to, I'm going to offer some suggestions and see if there's a little conversation about that calendar itself. It's a different format than what we've used in the past, but I think it's a little bit more streamlined, so we'll get to that one as well. We're going to talk a little bit about Robert's Rules of Order, which I know everybody's just chomping at the bit to discuss, but
It'd be the top item.
Right, yeah. So it's something that Jeff brought forward after one of the WASDA sessions that he went to in November. And really, the intent behind the discussion is not so much around adherence to Robert's Rules of Order, which is something we do. It's about how to streamline, because there are some ways that we can streamline some aspects of our agenda to potentially save some time throughout the meeting, which is always valuable for us. So we're going to talk about that. And then finally, Jeff and I also spoke at the WASDA Conference about, you know, knowing that there is no state legislatively mandated evaluation model for superintendents in the state. As you know, there are for teachers. I won't say as you know, because you don't know. There are, there is one for teachers and for principals. And so there are a couple of models, but we have done sort of a variety of things over the years. But with a new superintendent coming on board, we thought that it might be an opportunity to just take a look at a couple of the different models that are out there. Also discuss what we've done in the past and see if there's something that we want to land on or that the board wants to land on, so that we can sort of, or you can sort of reset that commitment once the new superintendent starts. So those are the topics we're going to talk about. Time permitting, there's a couple of the resources you have in your packet that are not on the agenda, but that I can talk to you about at the end of the meeting. And then we'll see if there's anything else for the good of the order.
Oh, for, we don't have a packet.
Oh, that's because they're right here.
I was starting to text here.
I was waiting until you were done.
They're right there.
There they are.
That was Joe's first test.
Details. Well, they're underneath the keyboard.
Oh, here's my packet right here.
So yeah, you'll see the, about, I think this is the fourth document, and it's Procedure 1620, the Board Superintendent Roles and Operating Principles. So the way that we've, it's, it's a two-page front and back document, and really, the way that we've done this in the past has been to kind of take it section by section, let everybody take a quick read of it, and then offer any comments for that section. And we, if there's, if everything looks good, we can just say that still looks like it fits and then move on. So we don't belabor any certain section of the, of the policy or procedure here. So if you would just take a minute to read our preamble there before we move into clarifying roles. We just read this last year, right? We redid this.
Years ago at the most.
I don't know if we have a date on here. We did it in 20. We did it in 20. Yes, it was in this building. There you go, Jared. Yeah. Yeah, you did. All right, any thoughts on the preamble?
One thing that jumped out at me was the line at the bottom of the second paragraph says, "Individual board members do not have the authority to direct superintendent." Is that meant to say that an individual board member can't say, "Shane, you need to do this," or "We'd like you to do this"?
Correct. It means that the, the board acts as a body, and so individual board members do not have the authority to direct the superintendent without consent of the rest of the board. Okay? Ready to move on? Clarifying roles. And this is just a nice table that really talks about the roles and responsibilities of each entity or each body, the, the school board, which governs, the superintendent manages. And just as a, so, so really, the board and the hierarchy of the district sits above the superintendent, and the superintendent sits above the rest of the district in terms of management of day-to-day operations and the staff within the district. So it gives you some sort of words there, like decides what and decides how, requests information, seeks and provides. So it kind of clarifies each of those rules. Really, this, I, I'll just speak for myself. I think that this board does an exceptional job with that. I know that that has been a challenge in talking to other superintendents from around the state at times. It even led to one of a colleague of mine leaving their position recently, that the school board got too much into the management side of things, not the governing side of things. So I think this table just does a nice job of illustrating the differences between the two roles.
Well, the way I view this is that and, you know, correct me if I'm off base by anybody, but you know, your, your role or the superintendent's role is to execute, to operate, to manage, to lead, and you're the CEO, if you will, of the district. And the board's not in, I mean, that's not the role of the board.
Right.
Should be to guide and suggest and create and approve, as it says here. I guess the, the other, the one thing that does come to mind for me is if the board governs. And I hung my hat on this from time to time, but is there anything, and maybe it comes up later, but can it be stated in here somehow that the board is a resource for the superintendent? Because in my mind, the the board is voted on by the public and to represent the public, and that's a, that's a fantastic and a powerful resource for a superintendent. And so as an operating principle, could that be part of the channels in which a superintendent sort of looks at and goes, all right, the board is there as a strong resource, as a representative of the community. I need to leverage and utilize that in my management leadership tasks. I don't know, thoughts from anybody?
Dan, can you hear everything? Okay, can you hear Jeff? Okay?
Yeah, it's coming in very clearly. Thank you.
Good. I made a note there, Jeff, and we can, if it doesn't come up somewhere through the, the rest of the document, we can look at maybe potentially putting something within the roles. Just thinking out loud, is that truly a principle to me? Has Shane got something that he's decided at his position as the E G?
I think it's a cam. Just to recognize and identify the board as. Well, let's see if it plays out.
Okay. All right, our next section is something that we on operating principles, we've got a few sections under here. The first is equity statement and advocacy. This component was actually added, I believe, in 2019, which also kind of coincides with this paper here. And really, the equity statement was something that the board wanted to put in as, as a filter. And when I say filter, I mean that having a lens that you're thinking through as decisions are being made. And talking about the equity is about treating all students as the individuals they are. Not treating all kids the same, that that's equality. Equity is giving every kid what they need to be successful. And then there are some questions for consideration there that move on to the second page that really, again, are sort of like a filter for how we make decisions. And that's why this piece of paper is here also in our meetings, just as a reminder that if we can answer these questions, not, not literally answer them, but just as a, as a filter and thought process as we make decisions. So again, if you want to just kind of read through those questions, these are fairly new, I guess, just over two years old now. Those still feel like they fit?
Can you give us a quick description of improvement science approach again?
Yeah, so basically, improvement science has the, it's under number two. It's letters A, B, and C, and it's a, it's an improvement model that we use in the district where the essence behind it is that you don't just solve problems without understanding the problem you're trying to solve. But we often in education, really everywhere, have what I like to call solutionitis. Problem comes, and we just jump in to try to solve it, because that's generally how a lot of us are built. Whereas an improvement science approach has you take a step back and think about what is the problem you're really trying to solve? And also think about it from a user perspective. Again, we sometimes, as leaders, try to solve problems for people that are on the front lines without really thinking about their user, their user actually experience with the problem. So that's the essence of it. And then it's really about trying things in small approaches and in small batches to see if they work before scaling up. For example, one of the biggest mistakes I made in my superintendency was, I think, my first or second year where we rolled out a whole new grading program at the high school in a, you know, in a very short period of time. Had I been thinking at that time of improvement science approach, I would have first thought, well, what is the problem we're really trying to solve here? And sometimes when you really dive into the problem, you don't actually, you find out that it might be something else. There's a root to the issue and not the actual face value thing you're looking at trying to solve. But that, that, in that instance, with the grading system, being really clear about the problem, trying it at a small scale, let's say, just with freshmen and just in science, right, to see how it works. And then you can work out the bugs. I mean, it, it's a common sense approach that often doesn't get used in, in leadership across the board, not just in education. Again, because people see an issue and they want to dive in and solve it. So this just approaches, it gives you a more, it's, it's a framework, but it's also a mindset.
It's really trying to find a root cause, you know? Instead of putting a Band-Aid on something, let's get, let's get to the inner core of what.
Okay, so there's a second section there underneath the questions about the leadership team members are committed to. There's just some bullets there that the board had developed and adapted over the years.
The leadership team includes the board?
The board and the superintendent. We are the leadership team.
So in this case, leadership team is the board and superintendent?
Yep.
Oh, that bullet there about the second to the last bullet, visiting each building at least once per school year, you know, sort of fell off that with COVID naturally. Personally, I think it's in principle to retain, but I think it's worth putting on a table for making sure that we're all good with.
I think we talked about, we're going to do a school focus for the meeting for the morning. Yeah, and we'll, we'll kind of talk about the school focus concept when we get to the calendar itself, but there's two ways to, to think about that. I mean, the school focus is a great way to do a more of a formal visit to a school where the board meeting is actually held at that school. And that school has the opportunity to share some of their strengths and areas of growth and the things that they're working on. But then there's also the more informal way of visits where, which I think most of you, all of you have done in the past, is sitting down with a principal, right, and having a discussion, just trying to get in each building in a more personal manner once per year. I mean, so thinking about the, we have really six major buildings. And just throughout the year, that was, that was a commitment that we had made a couple of years ago. And again, yeah, you're right, the COVID did derail that, but I do know that, speaking from just my experience with the principals, that they, as long as they have a heads up, which you've all done, they enjoy having board members come in and sharing what they're doing in that more intimate setting, walking through the school with you, that kind of thing. It doesn't have to be a long thing, you know, it could be half hour to an hour, right? But it's just, it's a visit that's a little bit more intentional and personal.
I think it's a desire by all of us personally, if not, you know, organizationally, that, you know, we have that connection with the principals in the buildings themselves, you know, that it's great to do the work that we do in the boardroom, but, you know, having that additional relationship and connection with the district. For Joe's benefit, the procedure on that, then Shane clarified for us. I mean, we kind of know the principals well enough where I would feel comfortable just reaching directly out to Mark. I mean, we kind of know the principals well enough where I would feel comfortable just reaching directly out to Mark, for example. However, is there a protocol that would suggest that we would arrange that through the superintendent first?
So we talked about that as a body a couple of years ago. And I think what we came to a conclusion that you do, and as Joe gets to know principals, I'm fine helping him arrange those visits, right? You are welcome to make those visits on your own. I just ask that you copy me in any correspondence. So if you shoot Mark an email saying, hey, I'd love to come visit the next couple of weeks, what's your calendar look like? Just to keep me looped. And that way, I also, it's not an accountability piece, but then I know that you guys are getting in the building. And it's just a way to keep me in the loop.
Thinking ahead, for a new superintendent, what would be your recommendation along all the lines if we want to continue the practice? But we now have a new leader.
I think you're going to have to defer to the new leader. Some superintendents are going to have a different style, again, based on their experience, whether they're new. If they're new to the role 100%, then I think that there'd be some more guidance you could offer. If they're an experienced superintendent, they may have a way that they have operated with boards before about how communication channels work. And so I would just recommend having that discussion with the new superintendent at that time.
The new superintendent may want to go with you to the visit.
Correct, right. I see you guys enough. No, and I actually do enjoy going, but there are times that the, just that one-on-one conversation is really valuable. Especially if you want to talk about the superintendent.
Good, thanks.
Okay, let's move into school board meetings. And this, we, I think this has been a few years ago now, and this is also in policy. The first are just some aspects of what you're committed to, which, again, I'll give you a second to read those. One of the things that I think that we sort of got away from, especially during the pandemic, when a lot of our study sessions were actually focused on school operations and not so much learning focused items, is that including a wrap-up, you know, meeting for the following month's study session, just as a preamble to what's happening the next month, right? Just, and that's another component of the board annual calendar that we want to put together. So we do know what is coming in terms of study sessions. They've been a little bit more fluid the last couple of years, knowing that we needed to maybe pivot a study session topic to have a discussion around reopening of schools or that type of thing, right? So there haven't been really as learning focused as they had been prior to the pandemic. But looking forward, that's something to get back to.
Yeah, I think on necessity, we've used a few of those meetings to kind of fight fires.
Yeah, fight some fires, right. And really, honestly, this year too, a couple of those meetings coming up this year will be dedicated to the superintendent search process. And so, and we'll look at the calendar a little bit again, like I said, later. But yeah, I mean, it is also a good opportunity, you know, to have some thought about what your topics are. But as Jamie said, if there's something that's coming up that's pressing, that the board needs to discuss, it's also a place to go ahead and say, let's take the time to do that here, rather than take the topic that we were going to discuss. Okay, we comfortable with that? Let's move into decision making. Take a second to read through that.
Are the other types of meetings described, are they on our website still?
Yeah, and they're also within our policy. You'll see the, sort of the improvement science approach come back through in this. Okay. Judge, go ahead. Let's go to judgment and trust. I think that the last bullet there, recognizing that each of us may approach problems and challenges in a different manner. This does not make another's approach wrong just different. I think that's an important component. I think that's one of the main reasons we have boards is to offer that different perspective. Yeah. Okay, we have a couple more sections here. They're important ones. So communication.
Before you go there.
Yeah.
Here, forgive me, but one of the things that I learned from day one that always stuck with me was that when a board in a decision-making mode, and there's discussion, and a vote or a decision is made as a board, then if an individual board member doesn't agree, or it isn't the way they think it should be going, but it was voted on another way, at the end, once that vote is taken, all board members get behind it. So I don't know that it's spelled out that way, but in general, that's kind of the way.
It's within the decision-making component, supporting the conclusion of the team, the second to last bullet in the section before that.
Okay, so yeah, I'm just elaborating, I guess, on that.
Yeah. Yep.
Worth expanding on a little bit in my mind because that seems to be an important part. Operating as a board that works together is understanding that we don't always get exactly the way we thought it ought to go personally. And I don't think this board has really been not on the same page very often. But in the event that it does happen, that once a decision's made, then we all get behind it.
Correct. Communication. And I'll give you a little bit of a background that utilizing the 24-hour rule is something that we have an expectation of our administrative team for. So really, and with the way that text messaging works in open public meetings, the only reason we should be using text messages is to prompt for, to check an email, right? Just, and that's a lot of times what I'll do with you is just say, hey, there's an important email I need you to take a look at. So that way, it's all in the record as part of the Public Records Act. It's within our system, our email system. But we all know that email can become white noise. I get hundreds of emails a day, and so I'm sure that you all get a lot of emails a day too. So I think that's just pointing to the idea that if there is something essential, that I will let you know that so that you can say, okay, I'll go to my email and check. Because it's easy, sometimes at two weeks in between board meetings, to not have things be top of mind, which is 100% understandable, being volunteers on a school board. But again, it's just, I will prompt you, if it's really just informational, I'm not going to prompt you. If it's something that I really need you to see, then I will prompt you.
And I can go both directions.
Correct, yeah. Check email, or can we have a quick phone call or something like that? Okay. Appropriate handling of concerns complaints is our last section here. I think that the the board, our board in general, does a really good job with this piece. One of the things I would just, for Joe's benefit, being a new board member, I'm sure even from day one after the election, he already started getting correspondence from people about wanting him to fix things or do things, right? And we hold firm to our chain of command of the district, not because we want to get people to run around, but because we have a belief in the people that are doing their job to solve the problems at their level. So, and Jeff and I have talked about this, we've had instances just recently. And so if a patron comes to you with an issue about something at a school, it's fine to do one of two things. I mean, you can let me know. But, and then I can help direct that person. Or you are personally just as able to say, well, if this is something that's happening at John Campbell, I would recommend you call Principal Scribner. If you need that information on how to get ahold of her, you can contact superintendent and superintendent's assistant, and then get that contact information. If they have a problem with a teacher specifically, encourage them to set up a time with that teacher and have that discussion. I mean, we really, we really, really pride ourselves on trying to solve those problems at the lowest level before they elevate. And I always say that when parents call me, and Tiara actually does an exceptional job of filtering those things and saying, have you talked to this person yet? And if they haven't, then kindly direct them to that place. And it's not, again, that we're giving them the runaround. And then we tell them also, you know, that their concern is valid. And that if you don't get the answer you're looking for, then you move up the chain of command. Just starting at the lowest level is really the key aspect of handling complaints and concerns.
I think it is okay too, even within that, because you will get your fair share of those, Joe. Is you can say, if you don't get the results you want, or if you don't get the response you need, follow up with me, and then I'll tell you what the next step is.
Right, there you go, yeah.
Be a problem solver at our level. It's not, but to actually help facilitate the chain of command and stuff is pretty effective.
Yeah, a good example was a friend of mine who was superintendent, had a board member come on and said that their neighbor had indicated that the salad dressing at the middle school did not taste good. And so they wanted the superintendent, they wanted this board member to fix that problem right now, right? So, and the superintendent did try to fix it, and then it caused actually a little bit of a rift in the organization of, well, what's he doing? He doesn't understand what this is where we order, this is why we order, and all that kind of stuff, right? So it is getting to that lowest level. That's a kind of a funny example, but it's a true one.
Well, it's inherent in our, just in our character though, if someone calls you with a question or, you know, complain to, do what you can to help. And so to, you know, be able to back off a moment and just say, listen, one, you know, maybe the best way to go here is, you know, contact the person at the school or give them guidance as to what channel to follow.
So did you happen to, so that's the last section here. Did anybody happen to see, so Jeff, you talked about the superintendent utilizing the board as a resource. Do you think that, is there a place you might see that that fit in any of these subsections?
I could see it fit in somewhere in the communication section.
They're in the decision-making section.
Yeah, let me.
Addressing the community issues that they.
Which section?
Board member, the second to last. Any issues that you may hear of anecdotally while in community that may
You said that that addresses the idea of putting the board as a resource?
I think so.
Yeah, whatever the group wants to do.
Okay. Well, that's something we can, we'll have a note in our minutes too. A little bit of that, not that we can't memorialize it somewhere, but it kind of does go without saying. I think I do utilize you as a resource, and I think, but bringing on a new superintendent, it's important to say that, yeah.
Well, I support what you just said, you do. And that's one of the things that keeps coming back to my mind is it is an opportunity for a superintendent, superintendent new or experienced, to leverage the perspective, the input, the connections that the board has. It goes, it just doesn't need to be said, it's just.
Yeah.
That's a principle or panel that a board can provide for a superintendent.
This procedure will be in our, on our website beyond.
Yep.
The only thing that I, any question is certain wording like on judgment and trust. Under the first bullet point, our leadership team members are committed to trusting that the intentions of others are positive. I think in a great working situation like we have, that's pretty easy to do. I think as superintendent turns over, potentially school board turns over, you know, is always trusting, when you trust until you can't trust it anymore. So where's that kind of disclaimer at? What if there is a board member that comes in here without positive intentions? You know, how do you get yourself out of that saying, we trusted? It almost sounds like blind trust. Kind of a thought, I mean, we're in a situation right now, but if this procedure stays in longer than we're here, and for some reason that changes for some reason that.
And I think that the way that I look at that, trusting might be, I like to use the word assume. In fact, for the longest time, I actually had a post-it note on my, one of my monitors that said, assume the best intent, right? So when someone's calling, or someone's emailing, or someone has an issue, it might be the 15th thing you've dealt with that day. It's still assuming that this person's intent is good, even if the tone might not be or whatnot. There's an intention behind what they're trying to say, right? Right? And so think, think if you use that lens first, then you're not reacting in such a way that might be defensive.
I thought about changing that word to.
Assuming, I like that.
And then I think too, Jamie, the next, the last bullet on the back of the last page, it talks about recognizing that each of us has. Have a different approach. Problems and challenges in a different manner. Doesn't make anybody wrong, it's just different.
Right. Okay, good, we have a couple of updates to that.
Dan, any thoughts?
That's what I was just gonna say.
I don't, I was gonna say have the expectation that people are acting positive, but assume, assume gets to it in fewer syllables, so I like that. And I I like the review of all these and I I nod my head along that we're doing well on on most of these bullet points, so. And we're we're tested on a lot of these in the last two years.
Yes, definitely.
For sure.
Okay. Next item on our agenda is student representatives to the board. So you, I gave you a pack, excuse me, a packet here. This is not something I want to go through today. This is just in general, some Hanover Research is a company that. Wassa, the Washington Association of School Administrators actually. Contracts with that does studies throughout the country and then provides summaries of those studies as part of the organization, we get those. These research briefs and this one happened to come out in August of 2021. Yep, it's it's the green colored one in there. And so it it does give you. There are strategies and whatnot in here for making the. That experience a good one for both student and board. But I I just want to first have an open discussion. And see what we kind of feel like as as a team here. And again, I think this is also something to bring forward to the. New superintendent, but just as a way of a little bit of background for Joe and everyone's benefit that has not been here more than. Ten, twelve years, we we started with the student representatives to the board. When I was Executive Director of Teaching and Learning, I believe our first year was 2009. So it's a longstanding practice. We were one of the first two or three districts in the valley to to adopt some such a. Concept. It's not a new concept, obviously, but just. Well, the way that we approached it at that time was to have two student representatives. That would do two-year terms and we started out with a junior and a senior. The first year, and so then the senior rolled off, the junior rolled up, we brought on another junior, so you always have one. Student that's overlapping from one year to the next, so. What we did not clearly define. When we put this in in play, you know, thirteen, fourteen years ago was. The actual role of the students on the board, the student representatives. I I think what it served during its time that we've had it to this date is just been a nice piece to have students in the boardroom. It's also served to hear student perspective through reports. We've had some of the. Student reps over the years that are much more involved than others, right? I mean, we've had some that. Really make comments on policy or things that we're doing and are not shy or scared to speak up. Knowing that the student themselves is not an actual part of the voting body, it's not allowed to actually. Through law to be part of the voting body, it acts in advisory capacity. Although we've never really formalized that in any way over the years, and so. I I think we've had our share of really outstanding people that have, young people that have been on our board. But also I think that we could give them more guidance and it's if it's something that we want to continue. From my personal perspective, although I'm leaving, I think it is something that's valuable. But I also believe that we can be a little bit more structured in the approach and how we utilize those students. So with that little background, I I just want to open it up for some dialogue around. Your thoughts on if with our experience to date and within the ideas or suggestions you have, and we'll have Tiara capture those in the minutes.
Since I've been on the board, we've had two different. Types of student reps. Early on, we had gentlemen that. Very engaged, like he said, policy procedure, he was. In the weeds and then the rest of them, they've almost been just a quick report with what's up at the high school. No, it's not, it's not nearest engaging, it's. Homecoming this week, you know, and they've done a great job and they've, you know, given us some perspective, you know, especially as we're going through COVID and some return to school and stuff. But those are two starkly different situations. If we want to create for the. Student experience and give them some responsibility, maybe this trip to Olympia or, you know, whatever the case is. I think we work that way from the student side of it, or if this is just truly for the. Board and the public to have someone come in and say what's going on at the high school or the middle school. That can also be a rotating seat where that becomes monthly, a high school student shows up and kind of says what's going on versus. One person committed to us for nine months, so. I think those are the two decisions we're making. Are we making this an experience for the student? That they can actually get some, you know, even within the the structure of the meeting and their. Probably true of borders and they're learning, you know, how that kind of stuff working, are we doing it for the student or are we doing it for the school board and for the public? Probably two different items.
I would, I would just chime in and say. I would agree, Jamie, and and other things that. You know, we go to this Wassa conference every year and there's. Always a section in there with student reps and recognizing the student reps that are at the Wassa conference, so. We've not even come close to thinking about inviting a student rep to go to that conference, so there's some districts out there that are really putting some. You know, some, they're bringing their student reps in and they've defined and created a. An expectation and a process to where they're really involved at a bigger, a higher level than I think we. So to your point. Some additional things that we can do to help. Develop. Or contribution to the board. One session I was, I attended a couple of years ago. Their student reps actually were. Goes all the way back to their application process and when what's required in order to be a student rep. And an expectation, if you do, that did do this would be that you'll find a. Cause or some sort of issue within the district and you'll do, you know, be a student based sort of thing, and then the student. Rep then would take that on as sort of a research assignment and that they would pursue, it may be a personal interest of theirs. And it could be something as simple as a variety at the lunch, lunch offerings, or it could be. Transportation, who knows, but the student then would take that topic, whatever it is, and that they would. Go and research it, they would talk to administrators or teachers and students and community and whoever they would need to. In order to develop this position paper, if you will, and then they would bring it back to the board later on in the school year and they present that. And if I remember right, it, there was one example where. The student did such a great job of researching and flushing out an issue and got to the root cause of something. That the board actually took some action and superintendent said, man, we never thought about it that way. And all of a sudden, now you got a new, new way of doing something and that was brought by students, so. I do think there's opportunity for us to, you know, have student reps on the board that maybe would have a little bigger role.
Think you get the commitment from the student, the student has to have some. Responsibility, you know, they don't want. Can I see dwindling attendance as the year goes on? You know, reps and it's because, you know, first they're just anxious and nervous to be here, so it's kind of fun. School update, but then that's kind of all they're doing within the scope of the meeting. Kind of comes a little bit, do I need to be here? Should I do this? You know, is it? Am I wasting their time, wasting my time? You know, what's going on here? There has to be something that kind of makes them feel. Part of it, and I'd love them to be part of it, but to find that little. Situation that that combines those two worlds be by the the key. And like say, solve the problem first, you know, let's put the problem out there and then. First get the student and say, now figure it out, I mean.
You know, one way could maybe enter into. Providing a little bit more value for the student rep in terms of participation would be to. Set it up so that a student rep could provide an advisory vote. Before we vote on initiatives or topics. Where, you know, they're not an official vote, but we would, before we take a vote, we would turn to a student rep and say. You know, we just had this discussion about X, Y, Z, whatever it is, before we vote, how do you feel about that? And get that perspective and how would you vote? And just as an advisory vote, I think some districts are doing that now. Just to help involve and include the student rep in the room instead of them just listening to all everything. Against to provide some input.
Or maybe the student rep could help select the monthly spotlight. You know, that's a meeting with the superintendent ahead of time, the superintendent says a few ideas he or she has. And then it's a student's job to actually go and. See, see what the superintendent's ideas were and then they pick from that for the. Spotlight and they're introducing it and it gives them something that they brought to the meeting every.
Like that, Sarah, you were gonna say something?
Yeah, I was thinking if we back up a step here and maybe we take this to leadership at the high school.
I like that.
Or and see what. I don't know if that's Michelle McCartney or if there's another.
There's an advisory, Thor's councils and advisory panels, the superintendent made up about twenty-four really diverse groups.
Where we kind of get a feel for what. Where if we work directly with the school and the students, so we can sit here and discuss what we would want from them or what we. What we think they might want from us, but it might be better to, like you said, step back and.
User centered approach right there.
Thanks, yeah, that was thinking. Because if there's really not interest, then.
Right.
We want to pursue it right now, or.
Yeah.
You know, maybe they just have a different idea, a better way to approach it, I think it would be beneficial to both groups if we, you know what. If we collaborated with them before making that decision.
I agree, I think that if, I think their key thing is. To clearly establish the. What what the role looks like, right? And then have a good selection process for that.
And the expectations.
The roles, yeah.
They have of us and that we would have of them.
Yeah.
That it's clear.
Yeah. Well, it might be worth. One idea is to actually. See if I can't get. Mr. Monty, maybe we can get a representative group from. Thor's Council, it's a big team, but one of two things, one, to come to a board meeting or two. Have a couple of board members go to a Thor's Council meeting. You know, with that, with two, it's it's not a quorum and just to have a dialogue with the with the group of kids. Sort of about what you're talking about, Sarah.
And if we do a school of focus too, we could make sure that those kids are invited.
Yeah, one of the things that, yeah, I agree, and I, one of the things that I've always, like Jamie alluded to a little bit. It it's very high school centered, right? I mean, it seems to be that because the the student board reps. Are from the high school, it becomes all about the high school. And Jamie's idea and concept around. You know, what what if they were the ones that are actually seeking out, you know, with support? What are some good things happening in the schools? And then bringing that forward, I mean, that just kind of gives, it does give them a little responsibility. But also highlights, accomplishes highlighting other things that are not just high school based.
Yeah, we could actually put that on the the big calendar.
Yeah.
Student rep line on there and that. Alright, in the month of November. Your report, you know, your reporter would be on what's going on at the middle school. You know, and that gives them plenty of time to.
I would, I also.
Check it out.
We could also invite them when we do our building visits, invite them along with us.
I like that.
Or they could do their own monthly building visit too, I mean. Principal, I mean, that's a big growth thing for them, they have to set the meetings, you see, and maybe a board member, the. Superintendent, but they they set up a business meeting in essence, they have to make the appointment, go visit, you know, work around.
Yeah, I agree, I just think there will be different levels of comfort.
Oh, yeah, yeah, sure.
I I like that there's some good ideas. Yeah, I, I, go ahead.
I was just gonna suggest maybe out of this meeting, we maybe. Maybe form a little subcommittee, somebody that would be willing to take this on and so. I didn't work with you, Shane, and just.
That'd be great, yeah, I didn't think we would solve it today, I thought we'd start the conversation, it's something we want to have in place by the end of the year. So that. We can move forward, I think, is everybody in agreement that student reps are an important piece of the of the board? And I think that that's fine. I'm happy to work with a person or two on this to kind of flesh it out a little bit more and and work with. Colton to get an audience with some high school students to actually. And maybe it's, because I think that. Just going in and asking them what they think. We might get some blank stares, I think we might have to provide a little context to what a school board does and is is about, right? And then also come to them with some ideas. And then see what they think about those ideas and see if they, what they have to add and or adjust to those things. So maybe we can prepare a little bit of a. Just to, you know, I'm not, I don't want to do a long presentation, but, you know, giving them a quick overview. And what we have done with the board, student reps to this point, and what was some ideas we have and then seek some input from them.
I'd help with that, I'd be on that committee. Yeah.
Great.
Maybe we can, that's where to leave it today, is I think everybody's in agreement that we think that student rep is a valuable thing, and so. We could. Give it up to you to get with Shane and maybe kind of develop these ideas a little bit.
Yep.
More and then let us know where we can help or if you want our involvement.
Yeah. It sounds good, and and Tiara, what we'll do out of today is with the minutes, we'll pull out kind of some of our action items from the minutes that we have. So that'll be an action item for today.
I'll send you some. Documents I got from River View that that one of the was to just the context if you'd like.
Yeah, and you might, you know, prior to us re. Convenient about this topic, just take a look at this research brief, it's. It's a fairly, you know, there has a couple of case studies in it. And so it just kind of gives you some ideas of what other districts around the country do with them. It might be helpful in. This is in our final preparations and how we land on what we want to do. Okay.
Yeah, thank you, Jamie, for stepping up.
Let's talk about the board calendar. I'm gonna send these down to you and Dan, I'll put it up here. There, I actually have an app, extra one of these if you want it because. Pass these down. If you try to put this on eight and a half by eleven, the font becomes really small. Yeah, yeah.
I like the large one, I can see.
Well, I like this also because I've, you know, I put this up in my office. And and now actually that we've got this as a as a Google Doc, which is what you see here. You know, it's it's more live and interactive, right? So I'll I'll just give a quick history on this. Joe and. Other folks, the, you know, we have some pieces that that we must do. Each year as a board in terms of taking action on certain items throughout the year. And examples would would might be like. Approving the Title One Plan or the Title One Policy, so that's something that happens in February or. The CTE plan, any of those things that are, those are policy reviews, there's annual resolutions that have to happen, we adopt the budget always in July. Cancellation of old warrants, Chris has put some of those things on here, those are things that we have to do. This does help build agendas, you know, as we move through the year. But really, the other piece that this, I think it, I think it was Kellyanne. That. Brought this idea to us a few years ago about trying to capture it where everything is in one place.
Three of us in that session.
In that session, oh, so Kellyanne does not just get credit. So anyway, the 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 old format we had, the colors were kind of all over the place, this one, we tried to align. The colors by by the, by what the topic would be. So you can see that what they are down the left-hand side there. And we did actually a couple of years ago add the. School visits on here, you know, we got started a little bit late this year, but again, that was just so there was some sort of, uh. Rotation on those visits so that everybody wasn't hitting the high school at the same time, or hitting one building. So I guess the, uh, there's a couple of questions here today, uh. First. Do the topics fit what the board would like to see in terms of. Having a snapshot of the year? And then, and or are there other, other things you'd like to see on here? Not too much more, because the page is gonna run out.
My, my quick reaction is, uh, more information on the teaching and learning, uh, aspect, I think, uh, I, I don't want to. Overtax, uh, having Alicia come in, but I, I think that might be an interesting, um, category to fill in more from July to December.
Yeah, and I think, um. As I, I, and she does agree too, and, and this was, I actually sat down with her in December, and we looked at, uh, the year moving forward, but she, you know, we. In the twenty-two, twenty-three calendar, there will be a more robust teaching and learning section, but yeah, I agree, Dan.
Well, and to that end, I think that's a great point, Dan, the order of these topics. You know, teaching and learning is third from the bottom, and I'd, maybe it's a subliminal. Identification of priority, but we should move that up. I think. Well, you don't want to get your red colors too close together.
Yeah, yeah, no.
Play with that. And you and I talked about it yesterday, and we're gonna talk in a little bit about, um, superintendent evaluations.
Mm-hmm.
I'd like to suggest that we plug that into this calendar somewhere so that we continue, that we have that as a visual.
Yeah, I agree.
And I don't know which category it would go in, but.
Well, we can. We can create a category for that. The board or WASDA events was also one that we, you know, we added, it doesn't have a lot to it, I think one of the things that this, some members of this board that were involved maybe four or five years ago. Had a, uh, and again, this just kind of gets lost in sometimes the whirlwind of life, but had the idea of connecting more with other boards. Um, I think that was something a few years ago, uh, that Jeff had talked about even getting to a neighboring, uh, school board meeting in a neighboring community. Just to see how the, how it's run, right, I mean, it, and so that was the intention behind board slash WASDA events was, is there something that the board? Wants to do that, that, you know, again, outside of these just WASDA events, uh, the only thing we have on here is, is candidate filing. But any, again, that's not something we have to decide or, or put right now, but that was the intention around having that banned on this calendar.
You know, almost wonder if. What's board notification right above it, are those two almost? You know, we'll see legislative update as a board event in a way. If we can blend those two.
Yeah, I mean, the, uh. Board notification is kind of a. Catch-all, you know, but we could maybe figure out how to. Incorporate some of those things in another way. One of the things that, and Jamie brought it up earlier that, um. I wanted to talk about when we got to this piece too, was about our study sessions, so. We did, we, the way that we've sort of incorporated. School leadership and really school-based, uh. Sharing, strengths and weaknesses, so that the board really has an understanding of what's going on in schools. Done it a couple of ways, we, we've had board principal roundtable discussions, where it's a open dialogue. Set behind a certain frame, set of questions, that each school comes in and answers those questions and. And we go question by question, each school shares, and everybody's here, and that, that was, I thought, productive, it was good. We've also done the school of focus visits, where the actual entire study session is dedicated to that school. And the principal or the administrative team and staff. Sharing about what's happening in their building, at their building, where we hold the meeting. So, I've received feedback on both, principals like both, they do really like, uh, having you come to their building and share. I mean, it, it is something that is, uh, it gives them an opportunity to both brag a little bit, but also to. Maybe get the board's ear on support that they might need, right, coming, moving forward, so. The logistical dilemma with that, which is not a huge one, but it's just, uh, it's really just a preference of the board, would be. Knowing that we have, if you think about the kindergarten, early learning center, the first, second grade building, CIS. Middle school, high school, and then the alternative programs being entities, so we have six entities, right? If you look at our study sessions, we have one in September and October, we do not have them in November, December. And then we have January, February, March, April, and May, so we really have seven spots while school is in session. To have those schools of focus. Which would then would take six of the seven study sessions off the table. Really, it just be, those, those become your study sessions, which, again. That might be okay, right, I mean, and it might be that if there's something that needs to happen and, and it needs to be talked about. That it's tagged onto that school of focus, because the school of focus meetings, generally, we haven't done those for more than an hour. Right, that, we try to keep those, because, well, we do those in the morning, and really, if you, if we do them at seven AM. Uh, high school stu, the school starting at seven fifty-five, right, and so, I mean, that doesn't mean that admin team can't stay and still interact with the board, but any staff that's there. We invite staff to be a part of the audience, we invite staff to be a part of the presentations. But we really don't go too much longer than an hour, so one idea could be to, really, to do a school of focus. And, you know, pencil them out starting in October. Uh, giving people the year to start, because really, the September, September one is so early, it might be like the second week of school, right? But if we start with October and put October, January, February, March, April, and May, as the six. School focus sessions, and then think about, is there a secondary topic that wants to be studied? At those, it, it might not have anything to do with that school, that's fine, but if you're there, you're in that location, you've got this chance to hear and interact with. That staff, but then if there's something the board wants to study more deeply, either related or not, we can just do it at that second hour.
What about technology issues?
In terms of, uh, for streaming and that kind of thing?
Yeah, I mean, we spent a lot of time and money and effort to.
We have.
Place available.
Yep, we have, uh, good question.
And then the other thing, I, I did like the, I love visiting schools, I think that was fun when we were doing the little focus. It, it's a different perspective when you have all five or six principals in the same room. Because then you, I think it's easier for me anyway, and I would assume maybe some of the other board members, when you ask. Single question, and you hear how it affects each school a little bit differently, and how each age. Puts you in that perspective where you're thinking, like, a little more holistically than when you are just with one school and you've got the middle schoolers in mind, you know, it, it's kind of fun to. Listen to how Jennifer would answer a question versus how Colton would answer a question.
Mm-hmm.
And feed off each other a little bit.
Mm-hmm.
You meet with them, I'm sure on a cabinet level or a leadership level altogether at times, I'm sure the principal group.
Always, yeah.
Imagine that, you know, conversation, kind of one comment generates a thought by another person, and you know, then you start laying off each other. There's a value, I think there's value to that. Well, what about, but I also see the value of going to the building and being in the building and that additional connection and the personal touch to it. Principal getting a chance to showcase their building a little bit and recognize some of their staff, but, I mean, we never get to. Really get to see or interact with staff. Outside of the principal, for the most part.
Yeah, and it's still an open public meeting, and we're still invited to come, and. If we can't stream it, we can't stream it.
Well, currently, well, and I don't know how long this is gonna last, and, and so, a couple of caveats to this. We're kind of making a recommendation for next year, right, I mean, because, uh, we're too late in the year to do a school of focus, and we do have. We, because of that, we've set up a couple of the board principal roundtables, set up two of them this year, so we're gonna have our first one in February. And, so we're really thinking about next year, currently, the Open Public Meetings Act is amended for the pandemic to require streaming. You don't have to be in person, you have to stream. So, uh, to Jamie's point, yeah, I mean, it, it would be. Difficult to do, we, we could, I mean, we're not gonna have this setup, I mean, we can still stream, it's just gonna be.
Can still stream from our.
Be a lower quality.
Cameras and.
Yeah, but they are open public meetings, and so I think that, you know.
To get creative, but I don't think just because we don't have this set up in the schools that we should. Think it's important to get into the buildings.
I thought this idea. Because of, because if we were to go to the individual buildings, it does take up our study session slots. And so what if there was a rotation? Every other year, it was in the buildings where it showcased the individual building, and then in the opposite year, it was a roundtable. And just, I mean, because you don't get that much turnover in people.
Right.
I mean, sometimes you do, but you're gonna have that anyway. So if you rotated that, then you would maybe be leveraging the benefits of both formats.
Yeah, actually, I was thinking the same thing, um. I was just wondering if, yeah, turnover is inevitable, but, you know, in terms of the, the school itself. And ninety percent of the staff, it's gonna be the same, so. I hear you saying like, uh, twenty-one, twenty-two, we'd do the roundtable. Discussion, twenty-two, twenty-three, let's do school of focus, twenty-three, twenty-four, we go back to roundtable, is that kind of?
Yeah, yeah. That's what it is, yeah. At least maybe it's a way to. About it for now.
Yeah, Sarah's processing. Yeah, I guess the smoke coming out your ears.
Well, we have.
Still have our own individual.
Yeah, we have to recommit, uh. Really, if we did that, that school would have four board members in throughout the course of the year, you might not want to just focus like.
Yeah, it's probably a lot of work for them, setting up the rooms and.
Yeah.
I can appreciate that, that's, they might.
Even though we treat it as semi-informal when we go in, they have prepared.
It's work to prepare, yeah.
If we're with them for an hour, they probably have at least an hour or two behind this air for that meeting, so.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Well. Dan, do you have any perspective on that?
I do, and I, I was, uh, agreeing with Sarah that being in the school seems really important to me, so I, my, my recommendation would be to have a September. Uh, roundtable with the principals and a July roundtable with the principals, so the start of the year and the end of the year. And then have the school of focus be in those six months that you mentioned, uh, starting in October. Um, and excluding, uh, uh, the December, uh, uh, meeting in November as well. Um, but I, I, I don't have a problem with rotating either, I just, I really liked being in the schools. And I liked the fact that it made it easy for teachers to come and access that meeting. And when we're at the administrative building, they have to, they have to go back and get to their classrooms in time, and I think it's a little harder to get input from teachers in those, in those circumstances.
Is your mic there? I'm gonna give him Chris's. So. Do we want to, we don't have to necessarily make a decision today, but I think. There's a sentiment that we want to make sure that we're getting back into schools, right, for sure. There's a couple of different concepts that are out there, there's a rotational concept, there's Dan's concept of doing the. Roundtables to book in the year, with the visits happening in the, in the middle of the year, and the, the, you know, they're, one of the things that I've tried to, now, no, no matter how much I say this. Still. Doesn't always ring true, because I tell, I tell the principals, when you're preparing for the board to come in, yes, there's prep work in terms of getting people together, but. I also say that we, we don't want a dog and pony show. We want you to be real with us, we want you to take the work that you're doing right now and share it with us. And just be, uh, be transparent, and so, um. Inevitably, they still take it seriously, and they, they put a little bit more time in, and they sometimes try to one-up each other. Which is, it's still okay, I mean, but knowing that, like, we want a real snapshot, the other thing is, you know, as we do these. Buildings are at different points in the year, right, I mean, if we start our visits in October, that's gonna be much different than a visit in May to a school. Right, so you're gonna get a perspective at each time of the year, which is gonna be different, right, I mean, beginning of the year, you're looking at what the year's gonna look like, the end, you're looking back. So, I mean, I, I, I don't think it's. We've tried to set up our, the way that they, uh, do school improvement planning and that kind of thing, so that it is job embedded and real time, and it's not. Something that it's a accountability checkbox, which, that's how, to be honest, when I was a principal and CEO, that's how the, the visits were with the board back then, it was just to, you checked the box, we did it, and. We, it was a, it was a dog and pony show, and that was when I became superintendent, something that I wanted to change, I wanted it to be authentic. So, again, I, I, I think we can accomplish either, either way.
Let's leave it the way, let's leave, for this year, the two roundtables that you've already got plugged in here, um, which would include. Early learning, kindergarten, John Campbell and Juan. And then CIS, inner, and middle school.
I, I thought we'd do, we'd do, uh, basically the elementary, okay, five together. And then six, twelve together, which would, food alternative. That, we just did that, I, that was an idea, just to, uh, because sometimes getting through topics with all the buildings gets a little lengthy. But there's still, it, you, you don't get both perspectives, but again, we, we'll have them at two different times in the year. Is that okay? For this year, I think if, if, if we build on the twenty-two, twenty-three calendar with the schools of focus. Uh, that'll be next year, right, and then, then we can, or you as a board can decide at that point, in twenty-three, twenty-four, did we. Were, were those visits good, do we just keep doing that, or do we want to go back to a rotation the next year of? So, it's a decision that's having to be made today, because we kind of already have a twenty-two, twenty-three plan of schools of focus.
Alright, so let's take one step at a time and do the roundtable like you've suggested, I like that, that plan, at least we have the, we have some sort of event. With them this year, it's not onsite, uh. Technology capabilities, and given the year that it is and where we are in the calendar, um, that makes sense to me. And then set our sights on next year, with the first line of choice to be onsite in the individual schools, if we can figure it out.
And on top of that, commit to make our individual.
School visits, yeah, I like that.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yep, that's assumed. Sound alright, everybody?
Sounds good.
Dan, you good? Thumbs up.
Thumbs up, alright. Okay, why don't we, uh, can, let's take, let's take five, uh, we're about hour and a half in, so let's take five minutes, let's break and, uh. You guys just turn your mics off and. Anybody watching? We're taking five. Well, yeah, let's, we can go into recess for five minutes.
Go for a five-minute recess and be back in five. Go for a five-minute recess and be back in five. Thank you, Jamie.
Mine, oh, go ahead, mine doesn't. I don't even want to.
Yep. I was starving when we got a coffee this morning.
So, do you want to take a few minutes to talk about that before we move into our next topic? About the, yeah. I know you don't have, are you having it for me?
Yeah, yesterday.
Oh, good. It's in your, with your stuff. I'll look at that. So I, I know that the consultants went through the calendar with you, and I sent it to Dan last night, that, that search calendar. So a couple of things that we need to, we are, yeah, we've been live, we just weren't on audio, so. A couple of things that we need to do, so January twentieth, that's a focus group report to the board. And that was a special meeting, because they want to get the brochure done. So that's gonna be a Zoom and it'll be fifteen to twenty minutes. So we just need to decide, because we need to actually still make it a open public meeting. Yeah, and you're at, are you out of town?
I am, but I can definitely meet.
Yeah, virtually, it's like fifteen minutes, right? It's, it's, it's just a, it's a check-in point, so.
Eastern.
Eastern times. So do you have a, let's look at, what, do you know what you have, is that, that's Thursday?
Thursday, I can make, make. So whatever time we want to have that public.
And they said it's, it's really, they're open too. I mean, they, they let me know, Mark, they let me know, he said whatever time you guys wanted to do on the twentieth, so it's really up to you guys.
Oh, you're in the East Coast for vacation or business?
For business.
We can work, I can work around your schedule.
Yeah, he's pretty, he's pretty.
Sarah too, I mean, you guys, I mean, you'd be working professionally that day, so whatever works.
Okay.
For your schedules, I can make work, I can find.
Yep, I'm the same, so Sarah.
It's a conference, so I can step away when, whenever it works best for you guys.
Okay. What do we think?
Do we do it earlier in the day, and I'm thinking about Dan and the time difference?
We're gonna be across between Joe and Dan.
Well, what if we, I mean.
Up for you, buddy.
What if we did it around at noon? Noon seemed to work, I mean, that's kind of lunchtime, it's gonna be three o'clock for you, it's nine o'clock for him, but that's still, Dan stays up till nine fifteen, so it's perfect. But it might, it might work out, I mean, we could go at, at ten AM too, or. You guys tell me.
Let's go at ten, that gets, Dan at seven, you at one, us at ten, is that okay, Dan?
Yeah, it sounds great.
First time I've ever had to schedule a meeting in three time zones. With the board.
Perfect.
You have a meeting at ten already?
You do?
Sure?
For you guys, so whatever time we want to have that public.
And they said it's, it's really, they're open too. I mean, they, they let me know, Mark, they let me know, he said whatever time you guys wanted to do on the twentieth, so it's really up to you guys.
Oh, you're in the East Coast for vacation or business?
For business.
We can work, I can work around your schedule.
Yeah, he's pretty, he's pretty.
Sarah too, I mean, you guys, I mean, you'd be working professionally that day, so whatever works.
Okay.
For your schedules, I can make work, I can find.
Yep, I'm the same, so Sarah.
It's a conference, so I can step away when, whenever it works best for you guys.
Okay. What do we think?
Do we do it earlier in the day, and I'm thinking about Dan and the time difference?
We're gonna be across between Joe and Dan.
Well, what if we, I mean.
Up for you, buddy.
What if we did it around at noon? Noon seemed to work, I mean, that's kind of lunchtime, it's gonna be three o'clock for you, it's nine o'clock for him, but that's still, Dan stays up till nine fifteen, so it's perfect. But it might, it might work out, I mean, we could go at, at ten AM too, or. You guys tell me.
Let's go at ten, that gets, Dan at seven, you at one, us at ten, is that okay, Dan?
Yeah, it sounds great.
First time I've ever had to schedule a meeting in three time zones. With the board.
Perfect.
You have a meeting at ten already?
You do?
Sure?
Well, is, is eleven better for you? Dan's good?
Okay, I will let them know. And then the other piece was so Mark told Jeff yesterday, so those final interviews, the twelfth, thirteenth and fourteenth, so just so you're aware, he's gonna kind of give, I don't know if he told you, but, you know, those are full day interviews for the candidates. You, the board doesn't have to be there all day, but the three evenings, they like to do a dinner with the candidate and their spouse. And then, then the board interviews that person after dinner. And so they will do their whole day, which is running the gamut of meeting everybody throughout the district, or it does not have to be a part of that at all. In the evening, there'll be a dinner with the board, the spouse will then leave and then it'll just be the board and that candidate for an interview, a final interview.
Dinners are on, on, camp on site here at the school catered in, or?
Yeah, yeah. Yep, we'll figure out meals as we get closer, but one of the things I wasn't clear on that, that I thought was one way Jeff heard is another, is the fourteenth, which is after your final interview. My understanding was it was at that point that you had an executive session and you made your selection following the third interview.
Well, and Mark told me yesterday that the fifteenth was a twenty-minute meeting and an official roll call. But to your point, if you decide the night before, why wouldn't we just do it right then?
Yeah, I guess the only thing that I can think of, which again, I can clarify, because we've got a few months here, but is contract negotiations, which might happen with the candidate, right? I mean, you, you offer, if you offer the job with the person on the fourteenth, you're not gonna do contract negotiations that night.
But he told me that when they, before, excuse me, before they walk into the final interview, that prior to that, that they're provided a copy of the contract, and so they have that going into the interview.
Well, that's.
I'd note down.
Well, that, yeah, that's counter to what, as me as a superintendent would want. Because I want to negotiate with the board, I don't, right? I mean, there's, there's gonna be a little bit of negotiation there, that if, if I'm being handed a contract, then there's no negotiation.
We need clarification there.
Yeah.
That is, that's counter to what I understood.
And really, they might be providing you some, it's still your process, right? I mean, they're, they're laying one out, but you could say, well, we want to do this.
Well, on the twenty-second, right there, it's saying offer is to be pre-negotiated.
Yeah. Yep.
That's after the, after the work, the final selection.
Right. So I don't know how they pre-negotiate a contract with all three people, you know what I mean?
Yeah, no, I.
Yeah. Okay.
I didn't challenge it, I was just trying to.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm meeting with them here in a little while, so I'll, I'll clarify both of those things and I'll, I'll update this appropriately and then I'll get back to you guys.
Well, Shane, we're grateful to have you involved with this, because.
Yeah, it's.
In some cases, the outgoing superintendent isn't even.
No.
Halfway thinking about being engaged, let alone as involved as you are.
Yeah, well, especially if you're firing that person, they're definitely not, or if they're going to another district, there's sometime a conflict of interest, but I happen to not be. And I'm living here still, so it works out well, and I'm happy to be part of the process. Okay, I'll get those clarified and get back to you, a little housekeeping, there's one signature that you missed on this, you have to sign top and bottom, peace on that.
I guess before we leave that, then, just to put it out there, that on that April twelfth, thirteenth, fourteenth, then we'd like to have as many board members as can attend and be part of those three days.
Yeah, and, and to that point, if you're involved in one, you're involved in all.
Great.
So there's kind of two pieces where, I mean, like we said going into this, it's gonna be an anomaly year. There's gonna be a little bit more asked of the school board in this year because of just this process, right? Because you really have the, the twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth are the two evenings of the preliminary interviews. And then those are shorter interviews to then decide on who the finalists will be. So again, it, it's helpful to be involved in all of those pieces, because then you can give the input needed.
And depending on how many finalists we, or semifinalists we choose, twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth might be connected to one night.
Exactly, right, yeah.
Like to do three per day, could potentially do four, can't do five, so if we.
Right.
Six semifinalists, it'll be two nights, if we go five, it'll be two nights, if we go four, it'll be one night.
Yep. Yep.
Fifty-minute interview.
I mean, you could even do, if yours were, you could do like a, you could start at four even if you wanted to, right? I mean, the candidates will be here regardless, you could do a four to six, take a break and then, anyway, we can, we can work that out.
My understanding is that if it's a, if one of the applicants is from out of state or has to travel significantly, that the first interview is on their, their nickel. But that if they are called back for the final interview, that that's on the district.
Fixup, right, correct. Yep.
We have to fly somebody here from Wisconsin.
Yeah. Okay. So, next topic of discussion, I queued it up a little bit when we were talking about what the topics were for today, but superintendent evaluation. So the way our policy reads, I looked at this last night again, it's that there's a mid-year check-in and then a final evaluation. And so we've been a little bit, especially during the pandemic, a little bit delinquent in that, we, we did a pseudo-mid-year last year, but it's that, again, there's no legislation that requires it, but there is in terms of the process, but there are some best practices out there and I, I think, Jeff, do you want to talk a little bit about just your thoughts on the evaluation before I talk about the frameworks and stuff?
Yeah, absolutely, and to start, Shane, I want to just publicly apologize to you for, you know, drifting from that process over the last couple of years. You've been more than. You've been more than tolerant and patient as we wavered on that, and I feel. This is me just personally that, you know, we, we've not done what we should have done of, on your behalf, on the superintendent's behalf, and so appreciate your. Your bandwidth on that and your understanding, although I do think on a positive side, we did accomplish it this last year. With a somewhat informal format, but I think was still a valuable one, in my opinion.
It was.
And so I, my objective or thoughts today would be to get a renewed commitment by the board that. We need to get back into that process and a commitment to continue or divert to the. Bring that back to our process, and that's why we want to put it on our calendar and talk about formats or exactly, you know, what, what that might look like. Going forward. Not to. Minimize the importance of the evaluation with an experienced trusted. Solid performance that we've enjoyed from Shane, but as we enter, you know, into a relationship with a new leader. I think it's important, more important than ever that we have that in place when they come on board. And so the idea of a review twice a year is the ideal. And so something along the line of February and then June, I believe, are the. Two months that we ought to consider, even though there's no legislation or any rule behind it, it seems like that's the common.
Yeah, the, the policy just talks about. The period of time, right? The, the February and, and end of year it calls it, but like February and June makes sense, right? So and then, but then the process itself or the document or how you do it is not mandated whatsoever.
So anyway, that's the, the hope today is that everybody would endorse the idea of, of making that part of our formal procedure. Not only for board responsibility, but also for the benefit of our superintendent. I would like some point during this discussion, Shane, for you to provide us with, you know, your thoughts. What, what's valuable to you as a superintendent in that event and in that process? What do you look to get out of it personally and professionally? Might help guide us in terms of.
Well, I'll, I'll offer some thoughts now, because as soon as we look at a couple of different formats and ideas, it might help with the decision-making process, so. I, I do think that. I appreciate what I try to do with, with the leaders in this district with their evaluation is I try to make it very job embedded. Meaning that I, I'm very much not a person who's into just doing things for compliance sake or just for a dog and pony, like I said earlier. And also, I don't want them to take time outside of the important work that they have to do to put together something that's not really. Important to them and, and meaningful to them, right? And is, again, job embedded, so whatever process we use or you use. I think it should. Mirror the work that they're doing, right? And, and not be like, okay, I'm, I'm focusing on these things here, but I have to provide some evaluation criteria on something that. We're not really even focusing on right now as a district, or it's not as essential right now. So being job embedded is important, I think, is, is one piece, the second piece is. I, I think that there, there should be two points in time, like Jeff indicated, the February and June. But I also think that there's a benefit for having something at the beginning of the year. To really be clear about what the expectations are for the year. I, I think that I, I would recommend, and I think this is not too on, this is not uncommon at all. I would recommend that the new superintendent comes in, provides you or you work together with that person to create an entry plan. It's like a hundred day entry plan, that's, there's templates for that, it's pretty standard and, and really a lot of different industries for coming into as, in a new executive role. It's something that ten years ago, I did not, I did it a little bit, but I was in the district already, so it was, it was, I mean, we, I just kind of picked the ball up. Rather than having to come in, and since we don't have any internal candidates, right? We know that the person's gonna be coming from outside the district. So from that perspective, I think that as a superintendent, I'd want. A little bit of guidance and also something that's like. They may have some ideas themselves, but you might have some ideas too of what's important for these first three months on the job. If you are to do that, then I think that that should be tied to the evaluation, right? If, if these are the things that they want to accomplish in their first hundred days. Then however you are able to document or capture that in an evaluation should be really, should be tied to that. And so that lends itself to a couple of different ways to go about it, so WASDA does have. Two different frameworks that they offer, again, since nothing's mandated, they offer these. We've also then done a more informal, which was generally what we've done this district is. Here's our sort of work plan for the year, the things that we want to focus on. And then there's a mid-year update and feedback, and then of end of year update and feedback, right? So that's, it's, it's very much tailored to the work plan for the year. And I think that there is some benefit to that because it is, there's no format for it, but there's a benefit to having that. Flexibility to be just very focused on what the district is. Yeah, there's, there's a sample work plan right there that we put together.
Yours.
Yeah.
Two thousand twenty.
Yeah. Yep. Yep, so that's an example of one I created right before the pandemic, right? So, and then it has the things that we, as a district, we're gonna be focusing on and trying to accomplish that year. The other side of that coin is a more standardized approach to evaluation with. There is some benefit to that as well, the benefit to that is. One, for the board to be able to have very clear parameters of what you're evaluating, right? Sometimes a, a work plan can be a little bit nebulous without really some clear ideas of. What the outcomes are gonna be and then how you provide feedback for those outcomes, whereas a standardized approach, those are pretty well laid out for you. The drawbacks to a standardized approach is it may not be completely tailored to the work you're doing, right? Does that make sense? So I, there's, there's pros and cons to both. I, I think you can use a hybrid approach, which is sort of what I'm thinking of advocating a little bit more for. I'm gonna pass out to you, the first, this is the first sample. This, this one that you're gonna get right now is the Washington State Standards-Based Superintendent Framework. And it's something that was developed in conjunction with WASDA and the Washington Association of School Administrators. And you'll see that what it has, it has six standards to it. And then it has themes for each, it has, has standards and themes. And then it gives you actually a rubric for what, what it might look like if it was done effectively. All the way from unsatisfactory all the way to distinguished. And so just so you know, that unsatisfactory, basic, proficient and distinguished language. It mirrors exactly what principals and teachers have to do in legislation. So really, when they created this framework, while it's not mandated legislatively, it was, the intention of it was tried to mirror something for superintendents, so similar to what others were doing. I, I will also say that with those frameworks that we use for teachers and principals, you don't evaluate all of these things every year. Most years, it's, it's actually, I was wrong, Jeff, when I said this, it's every six years you do what's called a comprehensive evaluation. Actually, your first two years, you do a comprehensive, and then you go on a rotation where you do six years of focused evaluation, which is where you actually select. In this case, it'd be a strand. To, to focus on, and that's what the board would provide feedback on. Since it's not legislatively mandated, I, I would never, and if even as, as a new principal. Comes to the district, I still work with them, even though I evaluate them on all the criteria, I still ask them to focus on a couple of specific ones. There's one about building culture within your building, and I, I, that's what I, I really focus on that. We still gather some evidence from the rest of it, but if I had the choice legislatively. The comprehensive evaluation is just, it's too much, it really honestly is too much to get from anybody and make it meaningful. With a job embedded, a thought process going on, right? So if you look at this, you know, you look at the strands. The standards, I mean, this is one way to go about it, you could say, well, what's, what's a standard here that we might feel as a board that we really like to see our new superintendent. Do within their first year, or you could do that collectively with that person. And then take one of those and that's what you evaluate on, and literally what you can do with this is. What, what I do with principals is we take the rubric and we go through and we highlight things. In the, in the categories, you know, and then we say, we look at kind of the preponderance of the evidence and we collectively. Come up with what we feel is a good rating, and I, I'll tell you that every single time. They are way harder on themselves than I am on them, right? I'm giving the feedback, but they're like, oh, boy, I'm basic here, I'm basic, and I say, well, what about this? What about that? Oh, yeah, I guess, you know, so it's, it's a good conversation, but at, at the end, it's, it's my job to make the final determination on what. Is it, are they proficient here, are they basic, distinguished, whatever that looks like? But we do it collaboratively, right? So there is some benefit to, again, having something that you can really look at and be clear on what the criteria is for those things. Again, the drawback, it may not exactly fit what you're doing in the district.
Clarification, then a comprehensive would be.
All of it.
All standards, whereas a focused would be selection of one or maybe two of the standards on a given year.
Yep.
And you're. You'd suggested earlier the, with a new person, consider a comprehensive year in one and two.
Yeah, but I mean, I, I. With a caveat, I guess. It, with the legislation works with teachers and principals, they're required to do that. I don't think that, I personally wouldn't advocate for anybody to have a comprehensive evaluation. Really unless they're in a area, really unless they're in a, an improvement status or a plan of improvement, because look. They're not cutting it, so we need more information here to really make a good decision. So we, we do that, we do have staff that we say, look. By October of each year, we have to determine whether or not we're moving them from a focus to a comprehensive evaluation based on performance. But ninety-five percent of people get more benefit out of being really intentionally focused on one area. And so since there is not. Any legislative mandate on how many things you evaluate of a superintendent, just that you do it. I wouldn't advocate for a full, I, I, maybe your first two years, you do a little bit more of entry planning and that kind of thing, but I wouldn't advocate for a full evaluation. I'm gonna give you a, a second format. That is a less standards-based, just has, just. Different strategic planning goals, so these are more like goals that the superintendent would have for the year. And then you'll see the middle column is ideas for how you'd monitor that. And then the, the third is an idea for the board response on the topic, right? So you, you can see the topics there. On the, on the left side, ensuring equity, and then what the expectations that are given to the superintendent under ensuring equity. Continue program, services and partnerships, recognize and remedy any issues, and again. These documents are available on the WASDA website, I can get you links to those. Because they provide a lot of examples here, but again, there's a lot here, but you, you could streamline this down to just some specific things that you wanted to have. Evaluated, and again, one other thing I will say is that boards are very different in how they operate across the state with evaluation. I've mentored five different superintendents. Three of them, it's been very collaborative in how they've decided what the evaluation criteria would look like. Two of them, the board, because they were new to their positions, said, here's your evaluation criteria for the year. And so this is what we need to see evidence on, right? They, they just kind of said, we, we want to see the evidence on this, and then the other three were more like, let's collaboratively come up with what we think. I like the collaborative approach personally, however, again, it might depend on whether or not the person that you hire has experience. If they have experience, I would say, and successful experience, I would say that you could do a more streamlined approach. Whereas if they're brand, brand new to a superintendency, you might want to look for a little bit more out of what you are gonna ask them to give you evidence of. So I've done a lot of talking, let's. Let's just kind of open it up to see what your thoughts are on the, the different, the different models.
Shane, before you go there, there's this last, last one that. Last format that we sort of.
Yeah, which is that more.
Fell into because we were searching for something a little less. Formal slash rigorous.
Right.
And so we developed. This. Format. More of an open dialogue sort of approach by identifying some areas that we were interested in hearing. And the idea behind this one was that, hey, these are some areas that we'd like to hear from you about, and the idea was that Shane filled out. His thoughts on it in these categories first, and then provided those to us, and then we had an opportunity to respond and add to it and. You know, ask additional questions and so forth.
Dan, for your benefit, the, this is a one pager, and the areas are district leadership, community leadership, vision, academic performance. Operations, character, and then there's a final reflections and growth, areas for growth.
Thank you, Shane.
Yeah, and Dan, I know you don't have it in front of you, but this is the format that we used on this last evaluation that Shane completed. For us.
And Dan, I neglected to share the ones I passed around, I have them here for you, this is the, the standards-based one that talks about. Here's your, your standard up here, these are the themes, and then this is your rubric here, so there are six different standards. And I could actually share this link with you, Dan.
That'd be great.
Yeah, so this is Shane's, this is a printout of. What Shane filled out from that, from this outline that we just handed out. And then I had a copy also that with my comments, and then everybody else had an opportunity to sort of add to that, and then that became. Our discussion at the executive session.
Exactly.
It's a much more informal approach, but it, it kind of addressed some key categories that we felt were important to know about. Not tied necessarily to standard framework or, or anything like more formal than. These others, but.
Jeff, at the end of that version of it, is there a thumbs up? I mean, part of this evaluation, I assume, is build a pile, you know, and happy, we're happy, we're happy, and all of a sudden. Get up issues, if a superintendent ever had fired or let go. So how do you start that portion of it? You know, how do you see flaws and then, and potential for, here's what you need to improve on if you don't, you know? There's still, there's still an element of just regular employment here besides some of the categories that we meet here.
Yeah, I guess I don't know the answer to your question.
Well, I, I can provide a little context on that, I think that the, so there's two ways to approach that, I think. The, the final. The final evaluation should include any areas of growth for the board, that, from the board, right? And, and I think that from there. That's gonna be something you're gonna monitor in the second year, right? And so you're, if you're not seeing that growth, then again, that's addressed, and if it's not to a place where. You think it needs to be, then you, you would not renew the contract, right? And that's one telltale sign of that there could be some. You're not fired yet, but we're not gonna renew your, we're not gonna roll your contract, right? Because we're, we're gonna wait to see how things go before we roll your contract. So another approach to that is with a standard approach, you actually have. You actually have the, the terms unsatisfactory, basic, proficient and distinguished, and so. The way it works with principals and teachers, you know, you can only live in basics so long, right? I mean, like if you're basic. Two out of three years, then you, there's a potential for you to have to be moved into a plan of improvement, or if you're unsatisfactory. That's automatically gets you into a plan for, so the, the standardized approach. Gives you an actual rating that you can come up with at the end, based on like, again, preponderance of the evidence, you look at it and say, well. He's got mostly basics here, a couple of professions, overall, this is a basic evaluation. The other way again is just the more anecdotal, that it obviously. Puts in the document what the areas of concern or growth might need to be. Puts in the document what the areas of concern or growth might need to be. That you can then utilize from one year to the next to see if there was growth.
Just for my personal clarity and maybe for others, if we were to adopt the standard space, the Washington standards based approach. Do we as a district? Determine our own. Threshold. Or retaining or renewing a contract, say, if we have out of the six standards. The superintendent must maintain. I don't know, we're out of six as a minimum or something like that is a.
Yeah, I mean.
District adopt their own way to.
Yeah.
Use that, use that data.
Yeah, and honestly. There is nothing that is, again, mandated on that. That'd be a local decision. I I do know that from just, you know, knowing eighty percent of the superintendents from around the state that. There are superintendents who have received exceptional evaluations. And then still the board parts ways with them. Like, just not a good fit or whatever it might be, right? So there is, the 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 evaluation. Can be a tool. And it should be a feedback tool, right? First and foremost, a feedback tool. It can be a tool in aiding in future employment. It doesn't have to be. I mean, it doesn't, there's nothing tied to. Evaluation like there is with. With teachers and principals, like if you are getting flawless evaluations. The only reason I could fire you is for cause, like if you, like for moral issues or what, I mean, like evaluatively. It it's something that's it's actually honestly a challenge for for principals and whatnot, because if you have an employee that you're. Having issues with, yet their evaluation does not reflect that whatsoever. Then. You know, that because sometimes they'll take really courageous conversations sometimes to have those those that that feedback that might be hard to give, but at the same time. That doesn't necessarily happen with the superintendent. It it's. If you have it clearly laid out, it's nice because it's a there's a clear target for what you're going for, but it doesn't have to be the.
Oh, as a superintendent. If there's. Evaluation in a certain area or category or topic or. Standard, whatever, and it's a. Evidence from a superintendent's standpoint is such that. Supports the standard, but the board says sees it differently. And says, listen, we're maybe we're out of the loop here, but we don't see that. I mean, I mean, is that a valid dialogue to have at that point to where the board could say? In our mind, this looks like an area of growth to us. Whereas a superintendent will go, shoot, I thought I was hitting home runs here.
Right? Yeah. That that definitely can happen. And I think that there's. Well, that's, there's two things on that. One. There should be, I guess, another drawback and potentially benefit of the standards based framework is having a really a shared understanding. Of what proficient looks like, right? I mean, I think one of the things that we require all new. Teachers to do and all the new administrators to do is they go through a day long, and for administrators, it's a three day long. Training on really learning the rubric. What our look for is within that rubric, and how do you interpret what proficient is, right? You've got these boxes here that tell you what proficient is. But we should, as as a board and superintendent team, really be clear that. We know what those, what that means. What does proficient look like? Builds a commitment to the vision and mission. So engages both internal and external stakeholders in regular discussions of the district's vision, builds shared understanding and commitment to the vision. Okay, what what might regular discussions look like, right? I mean, and you might want to look at some of the. You get into the weeds a little bit, and that's sometimes how these things can get a little bit icy with using a standards based approach because. But it is really important to have a common understanding of what the rubric, what the definitions in the rubric are. So that you don't get to a place where you're. Not in that position. The second thing I would say is. There, if you're going to use a standards based approach, and this might not be bad, i- is that there should be more regular checks. There shouldn't be, we shouldn't get to February. And there's a big misunderstanding about the progress to that point because. And that can be done through individual meetings with the president, right? I mean, that you can act as the board spokesman on just like the check ins, right? But then more formally at the February and June, but you know, that's. It's almost like a portfolio of work over the year. We tell principals when they evaluate teachers, there should be no surprises. You shouldn't be. Getting to the end of the year and the teacher just finds out that I'm basic in that category. What? It's, you know, because there's been multiple conversations over the year. And there's been an understanding of where they're at and what they need to do to grow. So you, I mean, and and I'll be honest that. That could be a challenge with boards and superintendents, only because. Taking that much time, I mean, principals have access to teachers daily. And also they differentiate their support with teachers based on where they're at. You know, in in terms of need, a teacher that has a lot of need for the performance, a principal might be in that teacher's classroom or meeting with that teacher weekly. In fact, we've got that set up in the district now, whereas a veteran teacher who's doing really well, they might just do their check ins. Right? So again, gonna it differentiates, but it it is more of a challenge to. Provide that feedback if you don't do it more consistently.
I would think that the periodic check in would also sort of. Build the case or build the information leading up to that more formal midyear and year end review. I mean. Check in conversation is certainly going to be part of the record, if you will, moving into the those two more official. Milestones. What I think I hear you say, Shane, is that while the. WASDA standards based. Approach is. Naturally, the most formal approach to it, it does lend itself to some more. Structured evaluation tools than the other.
Yeah.
And so using that as a. Place to start, but then creating that hybrid that you referred to. It would leverage the positives of the standard base, yet allow us to cater and. Personalize. The evaluation to the needs of the district. Might be the ideal approach for the best approach.
Yeah, and I think. Yeah. And again, I think that. Especially coming in, there's a little bit of a. Nuance to this. Process because whoever you hire could vary just a little bit. There may be a a brand new person and you say. Okay, I'm looking at their background. I think there we hired them. We think they're going to be great. But I think it's important for this person to really establish. The equity and cultural responsiveness based on, I mean, you you might. And again, you could do a hybrid, like, we really want you to focus on the standard, and then these things that are outside of the standard, right? I mean. See, again, there's no right or wrong way to do it. You might. It might be something you do with an initial meeting with the superintendent in in July. But having an idea kind of of what you want to do, and I think to your point, Jeff, the more fluid approach is what I recommend, but if it's a person that. You maybe want to see a little bit more standardized on one area because they're brand new and you, this is an area that you think is important, you could do a hybrid.
I think this situation. We'd want a little more standardized. If it was Shane, for example, was going to be our superintendent for twenty-two, twenty-three. And didn't really do anything all year. The evaluation be like, what's going on, man? I mean, we didn't make any improvement in any of these areas. The new superintendent comes in. They might not. Do anything that shows up on a dashboard anywhere, but they took that year to learn the system, to learn the people to, it's a different process for this new person. Than it would be for Shane. If we were in the exact same spot beginning, end of the year with Shane. Man, you know, you've had the time to to be here. Why didn't we make any improvements in this? The new superintendent, we still need to keep moving forward, yet some of their time is going to be spent getting to know cabinet, getting to know administrators, getting to know people, making relationships that Shane doesn't have to, would not have had to worry about. So it's a little bit different.
And in my view, I would expect that that would be the first year of a new superintendent.
Yeah.
Stabilize and understand.
Yeah, but I think the first year evaluation in theory should look different. The Northwest Leadership probably has a job description, you know, that's going to be. Provided, you know, maybe some of the evaluation is truly in regards to that basic terminology in the job description, you know, communication skills, how do you treat people, you know, all this kind of stuff. Versus we kind of get that box checked in the first year, and the second year becomes more of the. Detailed situations than. Smallish.
Good dialogue, good perspective all the way around. Back to the beginning. Attempt here is to put this process back on the table and back on the docket. Details is what we've been talking about. My mind. Be something that is measurable, appropriate to. History initiatives and goals and focus. Yet is measurable and can be evaluated on a rubric. Because that's where educators live. And that's common. Common to them. And so it would move us to. Create an evaluation that. Would basically score it based on the rubric. We've not done that with you because of. You know, the trust that we had in you, but I think it might be the right thing to do at this point going forward. You have a thoughts, Dan?
I I want to focus on one other thing Shane said, which is it's some some large part for me depends on the level of experience of the superintendent we bring in. I think once we know that, we'll we'll know whether. A more informal process is appropriate. And I and the other thing I think is is important. Is that it be done in dialogue, which is something Shane mentioned as well, even if we're using the standards based. I think having a dialogue to ask which areas they want to focus on in particular would be helpful.
Yep, those are good points, Dan. And, you know. As the new superintendent comes on board, depending on whether or not I know them or not, or I may. I'm happy to help in the process in any way I can, if you want me to, as we get close to that, you know, being liaison or helping support some of that work. Since you guys are not on the ground every day, but I can do that a little bit for you as well. Get some feedback from them on what they've done in the past, what they'd like to see and just share that with you.
Will you have your E S D hat at that on at that point?
Eventually, I'll be supporting the superintendents a lot next year, so.
Will there be a cost to the district for that?
Well, I'll bill you. I'll be still under contract until. Okay, good. I neglected, I skipped a bullet point. It was the Roberts Rules of Order. And so Jeff. Is going. In the wrong order in the agenda against the Robert's Rules of Order.
Yeah.
You literally.
I think we probably screwed that.
The one topic that we had on.
If you talk to the certified parliamentarian John R. Berg, who's the gentleman that I listened to, that probably would be a violation.
Do you do you want to, Jeff, at the the packets that I gave you? The first page of that packet, which now is probably buried in your pile somewhere, but it says parliamentary procedures, WASDA conference, November twenty twenty-one at the top of it. That's what here, if you don't have one handy. So Jeff, if you want, if you want to start with just your the background of what brought you to this topic today and then share anything you want to.
Sure. So the background on this is like we all do when we go to this conference, you search for a topic that might be interesting and or valuable to the district and. As the chair, I was sort of interested in some Roberts Rules of Order and, you know, thinking we were doing the right thing and. We did pretty good there. I went to the session. Well, what I didn't know is that. This gentleman is a. Very formal, knowledgeable. And I don't mean this disrespectfully, but an ex military guy. And so he has a very structured presentation for all of us in the room. And was quite candid about many things that he talked about. And it was all. To the letter of the Roberts Rules of Order procedures on the do's and the don'ts. And so the caveat that he started with, that I think we should all know here is that while there's these. Processes and rules behind Roberts Rules of Order, there's also some flexibility. And so an entity such as a school board, which he referred to as a committee or small boards category. Versus a board of a, you know, a large Fortune five hundred company. That there's a little bit of leeway in terms of of some of it. So. That all being said, he did provide us with. Some. Ideas for school boards that I thought might be worth at least a chat. I'll say at the outset that. As I thought about what he said and what I got out of the session, we do a pretty good job of follow on the rules. And so I got, I'm still looking for that paper that you referred to, Shane, so.
Pick up my. About this one? There it is, Dan.
I think it's the same as this, but I think. I retyped it.
Or do you want a copy here?
Yeah, if you have another one.
Actually, one right here.
Mine's here somewhere. I just can't find it. So let's just kind of go through some of these. The first question was, do we have bylaws in our policies? I seen this yesterday. We do not, and not that that we have to. It was just a question that John put out there. But we did find out that in our policy fourteen hundred, I think. You said, Shane, that we do have it stated in our policies that we do follow Roberts Rules of Order with our meetings. So that's. Good there, but so the takeaway is that the board chair should have and use the book Roberts Rules of Orders, Order in Brief. I took him to his word and I ordered the darn thing. So here it is. I've read it cover to cover in my sleep three times already, which is not true, but I am going to read through some of this because. If we do get a challenge, you know, it's nice to have this document. So. We have that in now. The board does not need a motion to approve minutes. The thought from Mr. Berg was that. The chair can, I can approve it or the chair can approve it unless there are corrections. The whole thinking behind this is that if an item is on the agenda. By virtue of it being on the agenda. And second of all. The very fact that we called a meeting to order means there's a quorum. That it's assumed. That some of the things on this agenda. Don't need a motion, don't need a lot of discussion unless there's questions and that you can just approve them. And so we go through a lot of formal. Entertain a motion, we make a motion, we have a further discussion, but. The takeaway was on a lot of these, we don't necessarily need some of that by Roberts Rules of Order. That doesn't mean we don't continue with what we're doing, but the opportunity would be to say, because it's on the agenda, it's obvious that there's going to be a vote. I don't need a motion at that point. Let's have some discussion and. You take a vote.
The no motion part makes sense for some of the stuff on the agenda, but. Why would the chair just approve the minutes? That would almost be working singular instead of as the board at that point. I mean, I think that should still, he's probably correct, but I think that'd still be something. I think it's a quick vote, you know, if Sarah got something in the minutes that care accidentally. Otherwise, that puts a little pressure up to the chair board to find every single detail.
Yeah, unless the board, unless the chair just said, listen, before we approve these, are there any thoughts or questions about it? Any corrections by anybody? Any additions on any of it?
Would these minutes be from?
Would these minutes be from the previous meetings, though?
Yeah.
Right? So, I mean, we were all there for those meetings, assume that we were all there.
And then to have read them ahead of time, I guess is another assumption, right? I mean, you read the minutes ahead of time and then you're fine with them. You're not going to bring up any points to say that, well, this needs a, this needs a correction.
And the minutes are in the consent agenda, I believe.
Well, no, we do those separate.
Oh, they're separate. They're a separate deal. Yeah.
So the philosophy would be by them being on the agenda, each of us having a chance to review beforehand.
Correct.
Where do they actually get approved at? Then you just make a statement that you decided to approve the minutes if there's no discussion?
I believe the line of thinking along that, those lines would be the fact that it's on the agenda, we've had a chance to look at it and the board chair is the spokesperson for the board at that point. Unless somebody on the board brings up a correction or a question for discussion that they're approved.
Can I actually speak up in this because you guys haven't gotten the opportunity to see board docs yet, but I have been doing some training on it. And the new system is actually going to require us to put in who made the motion and who made the second for every vote that we take. So if I guess if we want to make a decision about what this looks like, maybe that's something that you want to know.
The system defaults to that just because that's, this system was developed. What's interesting is, you know, I've been a part of a lot of boards and I've never seen some of these things, right? And I'm not doubting this guy, but it's just I've been a part of a lot of boards. So, and also the system that they developed has these things embedded in it already, you know, that was developed for municipalities and school districts or. So it doesn't let you make an error, correct? But anyway, again.
And please understand, I'm not advocating that we change really necessarily. It's more of a, it was interesting to me that there are some of these shortcuts that we could take if we choose to. I don't think it means they have to. And I'm not trying to you know, make our play here or anything. It's just a matter of, you know, if there's some shortcuts or some things that we can do that we don't need to do, then that saves us time, then fine. I think we should stay with where we are.
Yeah.
That wants to be the minutes master.
It doesn't take that much more time, right? All right. Any motion, any other discussion, all in favor?
Yeah.
Minutes do not have to show that a quorum was present. Because if there wasn't a quorum, the meeting wouldn't have been called to begin with.
That one makes sense.
Again, I think we're required, so it'll continue to say who was present. We are required to put which board members were present at each meeting. It doesn't specifically have to say that there's a quorum, but it does have to say who's there.
Going forward here, does that include remote attendance?
Right now, the way that I include Dan is I just put that Dan was present. If you would like me to specify that specifically, I can. When we've been remote only, the meeting location says Zoom. When we've been in person and live streaming, it doesn't indicate anything about Zoom. It just says that we are in the district office boardroom or wherever else we've been.
Yeah, that seems reasonable. There's probably going to be times where other board members are going up to be joining remotely. I think as long as we're all in discussion together, whether it be on the room or.
Yeah.
Next one is you don't need a second on a motion. I don't remember what the expansion of that discussion or that point was. And he was moving pretty fast in a lot of these and pretty matter of fact about some of them, no explanation needed in some ways. So I think again, we just, we, it doesn't take any more time. We get a, we get a motion and somebody seconds it and we move on. But I think by the letter of the rules, we according to my notes, and I should look it up in my book, we don't need a second. When a point is perfectly clear, a motion is not required. I don't know that I like that one because then that puts the onus on me to decide whether it's perfectly clear. So again, the idea is that you know, if it's pretty obvious what's going on in our discussion, then we can just move to the motion and get on with it.
Well, one of the things I would say too, sorry, Jamie. Right, yeah. The, and there are some things that require a motion. Even though like Roberts Rules of Orders might not, like there are some things that do like, there are certain resolutions that require a motion, a first, a second, and sometimes a roll call vote, right? So it's, there are, I guess that's another, I didn't think about that till now, another sort of caveat to keeping things the same, at least for the time being, so we don't have to delineate. Does this one do, do we have to do a formal motion with this one or not? You know what I mean? Because there are some based on just like the bond refinancing thing, we had, there's a very specific laid out statute about how we have to approach that, right? So again, by not having to look up, does this one require it or not? And just doing it, we blanket it all.
If it's a resolution, we just.
Yeah. And I'll just chime in a little bit again with board docs. We will actually be adding part of what's included in board docs is what the recommended motion is for each agenda item. So it'll actually say in there and you'll be able to view what the recommended motion from staff is.
So Tiara, board docs and Shane, board docs is a application that's used by boards from all industries and companies, private and.
Mostly municipalities and districts. It's mostly government agencies, but yeah.
And so are we assuming then that the rules that they've written into that app are following Roberts Rules of Order and that, I mean, they're putting requirements in their app, but are they really?
Yeah, they, part of the, Tiara did most of the training, but one of the things I did say that, so they do tailor it by state. So they, they must do some research to tailor it by state. And then there, there are over, over a hundred and something districts in our state uses it already. So.
They are the industry standard for school boards.
Here we've had people ask us before, we moved some items to the consent agenda recently. And once it's on the consent agenda, we are just supposed to approve the consent agenda. Unless there's an item we're going to discuss, and if there's an item we're going to discuss, we actually have to move it out of the consent agenda into the
Administration. Administration, yeah.
I think that would be something we've we need, you know, I guess it would all save time, but we also need to follow that a little bit more. If we have a consent agenda and it's an item that it's in there, we're going to pass it within the consent agenda. We just need to approve it as is without discussion, if I'm not mistaken. The consent agenda line item should take a shorter amount of time than we've been taking on it.
And so.
Got rechargeable batteries coming to these things. Gone through a pack of batteries today.
So consent agenda item. Any board member has the authority to say I'd like to pull that off of the consent agenda or I'd like to suggest we table that or create that its own.
No table.
No table. Yeah, don't table. But.
Yeah, I guess we would, just a little bit of we're probably going to want to do a little research on that because that's, I mean, we have a standing practice of asking Chris about some of the things that are, you know, cost pieces, right? We have a standing practice of asking about human resources action specific. We have standard practice of asking about field trips that are in the consent agenda. So you know, I, I think we want to be clear on that procedure before we make any decisions because we'd be pulling all those things out of consent every meeting pretty much, right? Unless the board was okay with just approving as is. So I guess that's something if, if the board wants that conversation, we'll need to make sure that it's clear that we do have to pull those out and then we figure out a place to put them. Otherwise, you know.
I think maybe this is an example of where, you know, small boards have some leeway flexibility within the formal rules. Personally, I kind of liked the little highlights of inside the consent agenda and unless there's something materially wrong.
Well, I, I think that the one area that we might, again, I think we do have leeway. This kind of a mix of what Jamie's saying is, you know, there might be, we, we started putting policies, policy revisions in the consent agenda. And we typically, you know, if there's a, if there's a pretty, Tiara and I kind of decide if, if there's a lot, there's a huge change to a policy that is substantive, that is going to make a difference on things. We're going to put that in an action item anyway and not put it in consent. Generally, we try to put in consent things that are very minor changes that are not substantive, that don't need us to take time to make a motion on it and pass it. But I guess to that point, you know, if there is a policy that we thought was, let's put a consent, but a board member says, I'd like to have some discussion on that. Can we move that policy into action into the administration section today? I think maybe that's where we could utilize the, a poll from the consent and then keep the, the, the minor dialogue around just the budgetary issues and field trips within the discussion. Yeah, I think that that's fine. Do you want to make that delineation? Yeah, that's easy. I mean, we can, again, we'll just, if non-substantive change, we'll put it in, but if there's something you want to talk about, we'll just say, hey, when we get to consent, can we take policy twenty seven thirteen and put it into action so we can have some discussion about it later? Okay.
So whoever the chair will have to remember that. I mean.
Well, Tiara will also remind us. She's, she's good at it.
Well, but it would only be pulled out of there if somebody on the board wanted.
Right, but if it's on there, you know, how much we open up for discussion? Nil, you know, compared to where it is right now. If it's on the consent agenda, we're discussing it a little bit. If we're going to move to this philosophy. That we're kind of saying, we reviewed it, we're good with it, no discussion needed.
Right.
Right. Yeah. And, and Tiara can actually with board docs especially make real time modifications to the agenda. So if she's going to move an item from one section to the other, that's pretty easy to do, isn't it?
Correct. And I am reading right now. It, it does look like we're allowed, your board members are allowed to ask questions of items that are on the consent agenda without having them totally pulled off. It would be essentially if you have a concern about something being voted on and you want to have an in-depth discussion. And that's where you'd need to pull it off the consent agenda and move it to another section of the agenda. But you're allowed to get questions answered there, no problem.
That makes good sense.
Yeah, that does.
Kind of what we're talking about.
So if the discussion got a little deeper or more robust than a just a quick clarification question.
Yes. And typically the way that would work is somebody would need to move to have that item removed from the consent agenda and put into another location. And that would be part of the minutes that some, you know, Sarah moved to have this field trip discussed as part of the administration agenda.
The field trip is a good example. We had that question today, you know, where's the funds coming from? I think that's a quick, good quick clarification where, yeah.
Right. Not like I do not.
Question whether or not. Necessary, then we should move it down to the administrative item.
Right. Yeah, good example, Jamie.
Sounds good.
Okay, Tiara, you're quick on that.
Good. Okay, so we'll tick through these pretty quick here now. No such thing as tabling a motion. We've not ever done that, but anyway, this is semantics, I guess. His term was postpone indefinitely. So not too worried about that one. Takes two thirds of a vote to close a debate. If it goes too long, the chair is supposed to be monitoring that. And if it gets to be too, too much, somebody can call for a closing of the debate and it takes two thirds. So if there's five on the board, he says it's three. It's actually four now because it's three point three, three, three. So it's actually four. I don't, we never got there. So next one is a motion is not required to approve resolution. We already talked about that. We're just going to stay the course. Board members and, oh, this one's a good one. Board members and others at the table should be addressed by their position and last name, not by their first name. Boards are a legislative body, so it should be Superintendent Backlund and Director Michael. And, and I went, okay, whatever.
Yeah, I've actually been to other board meetings and I've never seen that happen. I do see sometimes addressing, when, when the audience addresses they do it, but dialogue, I've seen it be pretty informal. But I mean, again, it's a preference thing, right?
You've got to understand, I mean, this guy is squeaky clean when he gets out of bed. So, you know, when a board member joins the board, no topics that require multiple meetings. So this is an interesting one. If you have a new board member, Joe, no topics that require multiple meetings, like a new policy where it takes two meetings to approve. Technically, we could not, and we did not, introduce a new policy in December when Joe wasn't here.
Required action.
Asking to vote on it in January when he is here.
Yep.
Which makes sense to me.
Makes sense, yeah.
Oh, that was new. I don't know. Did we know that one before? I never.
I didn't know that, but it makes sense.
And then if moving a meeting from one venue or format to another, like in person to online, the meeting is moved to a recess to be resumed next time at whatever new time.
I did know that one.
Heard for it once.
It's a recess, not an adjournment.
So we would say we are going to recess this meeting and we will recess at this time and move to a remote setting. It would be resumed at six forty five P M or whatever, right? You just, and you go into recess, not adjournment.
Anyway, I thought it was interesting. I think at the end of the day, I'm happy that we live in Seela and not at some high corporate facility somewhere where you have to follow some of the more.
Yeah.
And I appreciate his knowledge and intensity on it. And I'll, I will read through some of the book just because it's
Yeah.
At the end of the day, we do pretty good. We follow a pretty strong format and we've got our resident Roberts Rules expert in the corner over here, Ms. Tiara, will keep us in line.
There you go.
That's it for that.
So that's actually the last thing on the agenda. Good timing. I have a ten o'clock meeting today.
Yeah, I had asked if you had a chance to do any kind of a handout on our district position.
I do, and I've got that to give. It's actually in your packets.
Oh, it is.
There are, yeah, there are two handouts in your packets that I'll just briefly, just for your, to take with you. Jeff had indicated there, there are two hot topics that aren't as hot right now, but they were hot in the summer around the C C D E I, which is Cultural Competency, Diversity, Equity, Inclusion bill that was passed last year and, and a lot of disinformation about critical race theory. So one side of it has just we deemed like, we called it a little elevator speech to just, this is what we're doing. This was shared kind of in an open public meeting back in the, I think it was in June, but for everybody's benefit and Joe's too, just if this is still an issue, here is some background information for you. The other side is a little bit more relevant because we're actually having our community forum next week on comprehensive sex health education. And again, this is, these are the facts here that to go along, to dispel any rumors you might be hearing about what's happening in schools around comprehensive education. As you can see that there are not that many actual changes to what we're already doing. And, and so there are benefits here. I mean, there's some beneficial information here and there's some, if you are interested, actually, there's on our website today, there'll be a link to, we're, we're doing the, that, this one virtually. So it's next Wednesday at five thirty is a community virtual forum on comprehensive sex health education. So if you're interested in either watching it afterwards, we'll record it or watching it, you can do that. Again, this is just background information. The other, the other, go ahead.
Just related to that, I know that Mark had a parent meeting Monday. Did you hear how that went?
I did not, because I was, yeah, I was out of the district on Monday, but I can, yeah. Yeah, no, I don't know. That's a good question. And the other thing is Open Public Meeting Act. This is just some nice tips and tools that Tiara put together, that she highlighted some things. Just again, we won't go over these right now. I just want you to have them as a, as a reference is good reminders. I know that everybody has to go through O P M A training every so often, but just nice to have reminders. So. Yep.
Appreciate that. Kind of on a related note, is there any sort of update you can provide to us in terms of COVID and where we are with that?
Yeah, I think you saw my email that I sent out yesterday. It's all staff. I have a parent email set to go out here around noon today. The, the issue is obviously Omicron and what we have. The, the issue is obviously Omicron and what we have in terms of case counts in our county. If you saw the two weeks span prior, leading up to Christmas, there were ninety one total cases for school age kids in Yakima County and four hundred and plus for the entire county. And then as of the two weeks after Christmas, it was spiked to almost nine hundred kids cases and over forty six hundred cases total. So it was a tenfold increase in that two period, two week period of time. And we are feeling it. Obviously staffing is the biggest issue that we have and we're very lucky that people are not sick in terms of just having a lot of symptoms, but we're a lot of people that are infected. And so we're being preemptive and just planning for the possibility that if we are unable to have sufficient staff to run the district that we could move to a remote model for a short period of time. We don't want to do that. Our philosophy is we want to do whatever we can to stay in school. We met with our principals on Tuesday night. They're willing to do whatever it takes. I mean, we're already, we already have principals, coaches, instructional coaches, a lot of covering classes right now. We met with the union last night, talked about adding kids to classes when a teacher, when a teacher's gone, we can't find a sub, which actually works fairly well. My daughter, for example, this week she teaches fourth grade in Spokane. She's had eleven kids in her class out of nineteen the past three days, right? So you're not talking about large numbers of kids. And if you have to combine a couple of classes, those are all things that we're working out at the union last night. So we have a lot of contingencies in place to try to avoid a remote move, but just knowing that we don't want to get caught flat footed and don't want to have those plans in place. We're hopeful that there are plans that we're creating that we don't have to use. But just as an example, you know, Yakima sent out last night, they have three elementary schools that are going remote today. They're going, it looks like they're going to go all remote for the entire district next week. And so they're the, and Mount Adams did yesterday as well. And that was a bus driver shortage. And so that's, you know, there are caveats to this as well. I mean, it, it could be teachers or it could be bus drivers, could be we wipe out our nutrition. You know, one of the things that we're, the abatement crew that's working on the demolition of the new, the old John Campbell, the entire bait, abatement crew got COVID. The whole crew. So they're out this week. So it's going to push out abatement a week. So they're letting us know they're going to try to catch up, but so the entire abatement crews out. So again, if we get an entire kitchen crew out, the entire bus garage out, whatever, it just, we need to have a contingency plan in place to be able to go remote so that we can continue operation.
Could it also be that the county comes in and says our numbers are too high in our district and so?
Yes, the county, so the, the state is not going to come in at all. They've made that clear that governor in order to the state is going to make any decisions about school, which is good and bad. I mean, it's good because, you know, people like local control, but at the same time, you know, you're pitting districts almost against each other. Yakima is closed right now, right? Three of their elementary schools are in remote and next week they're all going to be remote. Our plan is to not be unless we have to. So it is a little bit challenging that way, but the two ways that you can shut down are local, based on staff and local, based on health jurisdiction. So at this point, we feel like a spike is not quite here yet. We're looking at potentially about a week away from that. The East Coast had just started to go down and we're behind them a little bit. So we're going to do what we can.
Doesn't quite feel like deja vu, but it's close.
It's close.
Two years ago.
Yep. Two years ago.
I, I just want to chime in quickly and say thank you to those teachers who are covering classrooms on their, on their teacher prep time or during their lunchtimes. That, that's obviously not sustainable, but it's, it's really appreciated and I, I'm, I'm thankful for those teachers who are, who are pulling those extra shifts.
Yeah, yeah. And we've, we worked on a compensation model for that as part of this, what we were talking about with the association last night. And so, yeah, I mean, compensation is one thing, but just having that time in your day is important as well, right? Just being able to decompress and get your things together for your next classes is important as well. And so we do appreciate. And really that's, that goes across the board, Dan. We've got paras that the middle school and high school offered their paras to the elementary schools where it's a little bit more needed. So Lee Rams yesterday is at the kindergarten building called the middle school and said, hey, I've got, I'm, I'm short five today. Can you send me a couple of your paras? And so great collaborative effort, but people are all over the district or stepping up. So if anybody has a C D L license, we could get you out there driving bus too, because that's, that's the one that we're really concerned about, right? Is the getting our, our kids here.
Yeah, I should have followed through with my C D L training. You could be an exception. And the board have the authority to make an exception.
I don't think to law.
Well, thank you for the update, Shane. We'll cross our fingers that we can maintain our in-person learning, but look to you and others in the district to guide us and make sure that we're safe and that we do the right thing for safety of our children and staff.
For sure.
All right. Anything else?
Oh, that's it. Good timing. Dan, thank you.
Yes, Dan, thank you very much for joining. Have a great rest of your day.
Seven P M. There.
That's dinner time.
Yeah.
Well, if there's nothing else, I just make a comment that next meeting is our business meeting to be held January twenty seventh at four thirty.
Correct.
Unless something changes, we'll be right back here in person.
Correct.
Good dialogue, good discussion today. Welcome, Joe. Congratulations, Jamie. And with that, this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you. We'll see you, Dan.